All right, the time is 6:00 PM. It is February 26, 2025, and it is our school board's regular meeting. Clerk Milner, could I please have you take attendance?
Director Beermeier.
Here.
Director Zuzik.
Here.
Vice Chair Dresley.
Here.
Chair Tate.
Here.
Director Brunz.
Here.
Director Milner, here.
Thank you. Now, I'd like to ask all who are able to please stand and remove your headwear for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I am looking for a motion to approve the agenda. However, I would like to make a couple of notes here. One, the principals will be coming to present their behavior reports. However, they're coming from conferences and IEP meetings and stuff like that, so we may just shift it a little bit as far as when they get here. And then we also have Representative DePell coming as a part, as a member of the, he's the Minnesota House, and he is on both the Education Finance and Education Policy Committees. So, we're going to be talking about our legislative priorities with him. So, we are going to adjust accordingly to his arrival as well. And then I do need to, actually, I need, I will make a motion to remove the solar item from the agenda now, but otherwise approve the rest of the agenda.
I make a motion to approve the agenda with the flexibility needed for those different members arriving at different times and with the rescinding, at least for now, the solar discussion.
Thank you. Could I get a second, please?
Beermeier, seconds.
All right, any discussion? All right, all those in favor of approving the agenda with those modifications, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say aye. Or, sorry, nay. Motion passes unanimously to approve the agenda with those modifications mentioned. Next, I'm looking for a motion to, that's all right, Markson Peters is talking to us. Can I get a motion on the minutes, please?
I motion to approve the minutes.
You get a second?
Milner, second.
All right, to be clear, it's the motion to approve the minutes from January 22nd and February 19th. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. Motion passes unanimously to approve the minutes. All right, next, I would like to recognize the visitors in your, in the room. Please, thank you for coming tonight, and for those online, also, thank you for watching. We appreciate your involvement in Hastings Public Schools. I would like to take a moment, however, to make one request. Last week, I had two board members express a little bit of frustration with conversations happening out in the audience that was making it hard for them to hear our meeting. So, if you need to have a conversation, if you need to take a phone call, whatever, I ask that you either go way to the back of the room or please step out. All right, if there are additional disruptions, I may have to ask you to leave the room. All right, first up, we have our Raider Spotlight.
All right, everyone knows this is my very favorite part of every board meeting, other than the students presenting as well. So, tonight, first up, we have Keely Schumacher. So, Keely, yeah. Keely was recognized as the 2024 Inclusive Educator of the Year Award by ISD 917. So, Keely, we're super excited for your accomplishments and just want to hear a little bit about your work. And then we have a pin of pride for you as well.
So, I'm Keely Schumacher. I've been teaching at Hastings Middle School for, this is going to be my 10th year. And I got to start my career here, and I just feel really grateful that I've gotten to stay. I actually went to Hastings Middle School and was just really grateful for all of the teachers and staff who invested in me and saw whatever needs I had and took the time to really invest in those for me. And so, I'm so thankful for all of them. Just the privilege to get to teach here in Hastings in the home community I grew up in. I feel like I get just kind of special insight in what it's like to be a kid in Hastings. And though I'm far from that now, just understanding the community. And, you know, I'm fortunate, I've gotten to teach and work with some of you. And, yeah, I just feel really grateful. And the students I've had, you know, all have their own strengths and areas of growth. And I just get really excited to see how can I best serve each kid? Because each kid, you know, comes with their own background, their own needs, and meeting them where they're at. And so, I just felt really honored to get this award. And it's really not any big effort on my part. It's really just seeing the students for who they are and what they need.
Yeah. Very humble from your part, but thank you for all that you do for our students. And obviously, you're making a difference, so thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, next, we have, one thing that we've been talking about for quite some time is our partnership with Alina. And so, tonight, we have Brandy Pollinger and April Prunty with us, I believe. Yes, thank you. And a couple more, so come on up. So, just a couple of things. So, we have been talking about a relationship to provide healthcare opportunities for our students. And really, because of you, that has become a reality for our students for next year. So, we wanted to take a minute and just recognize all of your work and how excited that we are to move forward with this. Because really, it's what could be or we envisioned to what now will be. So, thank you for that. And if you want to talk a little bit about some of that work, the board would love to hear it.
I'm Brandy Pollinger. I'm the Community Engagement Manager for Alina Health East Region. And I'm just so excited about this partnership. I've been partnering with the school district on different things for probably the last 10 years. But to me, this is really what community engagement is. We're sitting around the table and we're figuring out what's best for our students. And in the long term, hopefully recruiting some healthcare workers to help with that shortage. And I don't know, April, if you are one of you, you want to talk about the program?
I can just, very quickly, so April Prunty, I work with Alina's Nursing Professional Development Team. And I have Amanda Forsyth and Katie Jones with me tonight, who are also on the team and really the brains behind the operation. We're just incredibly thankful for the partnership and the opportunity to get in front of your students. And healthcare is in a really tough spot right now, much like education. So, we're just really excited to partner and think about how we can make a positive impact and influence on the professions. We are not, I think what's unique about this is we are not making this exclusively about traditional healthcare roles. So, you think of physicians and nurses. But this is really an opportunity for us to talk about all the team members that go into a healthcare system, engineering, facilities. So, really, an opportunity for anybody. So, we're excited to be a part of it. And it's, you know, an opportunity for us to dream big. And I think this is one of the first initiatives in the state that I'm aware of that's doing something like this. So, excited to be partnered with you all to do that.
Well, and I'll just mention, my view or vision of this was a CNA program, right? And when they came, they said, oh, and we can do this, and we can do that. And so, it was, it's just growing into so much more than I could have hoped for. So, because of you, that is happening. So, thank you. We have a small token.
Thank you.
All right, last, we have Hastings Bus Company. This is an opportunity for us to say thank you to our partnership. And its appreciation was last week. And so, we have Pat Regan and Terry Johnson joining us. Welcome.
Thank you.
Just tell us a little bit about what you've been doing for appreciation and the relationship that we have had as well with the district.
Well, last week, we had Minnesota State School Bus Driver Appreciation Day, and we appreciate our aides too. So, we had a breakfast, went into lunch, invited people for lunch. And other than that, we're just absorbing this warm weather right now. And I just want to say, there's four people in the back room that make my life very easy when I need help from them. And I hope I give them help back when they need help too, because I've always felt we're all in this together, so.
And who are they?
Well, Mindy Trevanier, Chris Moore, Scott Doran, and Ryan Nguyen. I think I, it's Ryan Nguyen, I hope. He's new. The other ones, I've had years of experience with. So, no, it's, it's a special relationship, and it works. We make it work.
Thank you.
I'm here to just say thank you for your support and loyalty for a few years now. And I'm humbled by Terry and the people who serve the school district behind the wheel and the bus aides and the mechanics and the trainers. There's, it's really a, it's, it's a, it's a big job. We've got about 150 people working at the Hastings Terminal here that serve primarily the school district. And we're, we're just very, very thankful for the loyalty and the opportunity to work in such a good place for such good, good people. It's, we, we do work in a lot of different places, this work, and we really enjoy it here. And we thank you for recognizing us. And we just, I personally feel thankful, humble, and blessed. We appreciate being recognized.
Well, we appreciate the partnership and certainly all of your staff, so thank you.
Thank you.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, and at this time, the board will hear comments from the public. We have five speakers tonight who will be recognized and allotted three minutes of time. We have a 30-second sign and to alert you to the time remaining, as well as a timer to signal the end of your time. So, Lindy over here has the 30-second time, time, or time card. We do ask that speakers state their name for the record and refrain from using this time to criticize or complain about any specific employee by name. Please be aware that the school board is interested in hearing comments from the public and will listen carefully, but is not obligated to respond or debate in this setting. And we do ask that all of our speakers be respectful. Comments by any others may be ruled out of order, and those not abiding by this may potentially be asked to leave. So, the five speakers will go in this order this evening. We have Lisa Hadeen first, Nancy Blanchard second, Teddy Trye third, Mike Hoggan fourth, and Colleen Youngquist fifth. So, Lisa Hadeen, welcome.
Good evening. My name is Lisa Hadeen. I'm a resident of the Hastings School District. I'm here to speak on two key issues tonight. First, I'd like to correct some misinformation that was provided during the work session with regard to the history of Policy 100 Equity and Diversity. It was presented as a really short-term, possibly even political effort to put that policy into place. And in actuality, I did provide all of this information to the board via email. I just wanted to make sure it gets in the public record. Work began within the entire community of Hastings in 2016, partnered between school, business, city, YMCA as a facilitator, and leading to a proclamation jointly held between the city and the school district with regard to acknowledging, embracing, and supporting the diversity of our community in 2018. There were quite a few things that happened as a response to that. Some of them were in response to that, and some just happened that caused the implementation of the policy to be a year or two, a couple of years later. But that's what it grew out of. It was a long, multi-dimensional, community-wide effort to build it. So, I think that's important to understand. And then, secondly, the comment was made during the work session that it wouldn't matter if we woke up tomorrow and this policy was gone from our computer. And I think, unfortunately, on some level, that might have been an accurate statement. Because I would say to this point, the board, as it currently is operating, is not following the policy and is not implementing the policy. This is not a policy about how any one student is treated in any one setting, at any one school. It's a policy about, as an organization, how do you proactively assess the needs of students, identify where gaps are? Not a gap for an individual student, but a gap for a population of students or possibly a population of staff. How do you assess that and then allocate resources? And I don't think that's happened. There's been very little to no discussion with regard to achievement gap or participation gap other than possibly around cost of field trips. It's been a pretty limited discussion. And that's, that's the heart of this policy, and it just hasn't been used. And I'm really thinking, as you guys are going into a million-and-a-half-dollar budget cut, which is not lightly made, that's, that's like a 15 FTE-ish kind of group. You know, that's, that's a big number. I think it's imperative that you hold the principles of this policy in front of you. And you hold the allocation of resources to align to the actual needs of populations of our students. And I think this effort to sunset really quickly before that and, and in response to some cultural, political statements is knee-jerk and is being presented in a disingenuous way. And I wish you would embrace the policy and implement it for all students. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, next up, we have Nancy Blanchard. Welcome.
Do you need help?
No. No, the handles are under there. There we go.
Good evening. My name is Nancy Blanchard. I am also a Hastings resident, have been for 40-plus years. And I'm here to speak on sunsetting the Policy 100 for the following reasons. And I acknowledge what has been spoken already. But I personally see this as a deliberately divisive policy in some of its wording. And it does not unify our students and our community. Within mind the presidential elective order that's concerning the DEI initiative, we could lose as much as $1.5 million. I don't know anybody in this community who could supply that. They should step forward if they can. Also, there is no legal reference by the Minnesota, Minnesota School Board Association in compliance with this policy. The policy is oriented and not, and not is inclusive. It tends to, tends to be more of a, seems to be more of a mission statement to me. The focus seems to be on unity and equality to address the full 4,300 student body, to promote a collective body, not one divided and therefore weakened. Our body of students needs to be strong, and we need to see them as all one collective and not isolate anyone out. A more processing focus should perhaps be considered for math and reading, since our scores with all of Minnesota are quite low in both of those areas. And to me, that's a much more important thing to be considered about than this Policy 100. Our focus as an educational institution needs to raise the bar, improve academics, infuse a "we can do it" attitude to encourage excellence for everyone. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, next, I'd like to invite Teddy Trye up.
My name is Teddy Trye, and I am a resident of the district and a graduate of Hastings High School. I'm in favor of sunsetting this policy, the Policy 100 Equity and Diversity. Some of my reasons are that the recent presidential order ending radical indoctrination in K-12 schooling requires all schools to provide a rigorous education and instill a pride in our wonderful nation and its values, rather than what has been happening, the indoctrination of our children in radical, un-American ideologies while blocking parental oversight. Schools that continue to push these radical policies can risk the loose loss of federal funding, something we would not want to happen to our district. Policy 100 contains much DEI language that is of a divisive nature and has become politicized, such as a definition included in a policy for educational equality equity and could be a cause of our losing funding. DEI language seeks to divide us into groups that we have no control over, what race we were born into or what our sex at birth is. We should not be judged by being born into these groups, but instead, we are all unique individuals with unique characteristics. All of us, including the students in our schools, should be judged on our unique characteristics, not by the groups they are born into and have no control over. Much of Policy 100 is actually covered in various other current policies of our district, especially Policy 102, Equal Educational Opportunity, Policy 401, Equal Employment Opportunity, 412, Harassment and Violence, and Policy 522, Sex Non-Discrimination, without using divisive language. We do not need this divisive language in our schools, and there is no legal references attached to this Policy 100. I'm a believer in cleaning up and simplifying things. I am especially in favor of sunsetting this policy because of its very divisive language when we, what we really need is to come all together for the betterment of our students and community. It is time to sunset this policy as both unnecessary, duplicative, and a possible cause of loss of funding, federal funding, so that we can continue to provide great education for our students now and in the future. Thank you.
Thank you. Before I invite Mike Hoggan, I would just like to make one clarifying statement. Ms. Blanchard stated that we could lose 1.5 million in federal funding. I just want to make it clear, we actually received 2.6 million in federal funding in total. So, just wanted to clarify that one thing. Mike Hoggan, welcome.
I am Michael Hoggan. I'm a resident of Hastings. I have two grown children who have gone through the ISD 200 public schools. I have three grandchildren that are in the school right now. One thing I would like to do before I begin is I would like to acknowledge the board here, the superintendent, the directors, and the youth. I applaud their effort to get public comment back into school board meetings. That was gone and is back, and that is good. I'm here to talk about Policy 100, and I'm going to approach this from a different direction. For seven years, I started as a regulatory engineer, implementing regulations. I chaired a committee on regulations and implementation, and I ended up being the liaison to the NRC. So, that is my history and background. Now, you know, how does that apply to the school board? If you replace regulatory with a state statute, it's identical. Now, this is a document, it's State Statute 13D, and the stuff in yellow is related to the school board. All the rest of these entities on here all have to comply to this document. I had to comply to that document. So, looking at Policy 100 from a top-down, it never was a policy. Without a legal reference, there is no legal basis to that document. Because there is no state statute, you cannot create a policy and you cannot create a procedure. A lot of what is in there has no basis. So, based on all of that, sunsetting that policy is very appropriate. I had dealt with the school board for a long time, over many years. I provided input based on what I knew, and a lot of that input was rejected. As long as the superintendent, the board members, and the attorney agreed, they could shut down anything. There are other avenues to approach this, and I did use those avenues. And those avenues were, you know, contacting the Attorney General. These are all documented. Commissioner of Admin Procedures, DPO, Department for Data Practices, and BOSA, Minnesota Board of School Administration. They have formal methods to apply for a review. I supplied those, went through all of the routines, and they picked them up and were investigating them. Now, nobody knew, nobody knew, what the, what was that?
That was your time.
Oh, I didn't even see the 30 seconds.
Sorry.
Oh, sorry.
Sorry.
Well, anyway.
Just wrap up real quick.
Yeah, so, those things were investigated. It is ongoing. The superintendent was involved in those. I was told not to let anybody know. If the board members don't know, it's from the superintendent. So, there are issues that were being addressed, and I think it led to his resignation.
All right, thank you. All right, and finally, I'd like to invite up Colleen Youngquist. Welcome.
Good evening. My name is Colleen Youngquist. I am an alumni of Hastings High School. My three children graduated from Hastings High School. I have seven grandchildren, one has graduated, and the rest are attending. And we, I'm a lifelong Hastings resident, and we have been business owners in this town. If you read the emails that I sent to all of you, you know that I am a, I am a grandmother that is just really concerned about my grandchild and all of the other children that this would affect. I'm praying that you do the right thing and uphold the policy, not only for my grandson Sammy, but for all of the other unique students that make up our student body. Eliminating a diversity policy sends a message that our schools do not respect or value diverse students. Special Ed services are the most important equity services or resources in this school district. It gives kids like my grandson and the others with challenges the ability to reach full potential. A school board that doesn't see the value of an equity policy is a slap in the face to the, to the families of these children. Public education is for everyone. In the 1950s and 1960s, children with Down Syndrome were institutionalized. They were deprived of education, they were deprived of healthcare. But we know better now. Our world is no longer flat. Let's not go backwards. Ms. Tate replied to my email a few days ago, and she indicated that there is a strategic plan in the works that would replace this policy. I don't believe we can count on a plan that hasn't been revealed and isn't finalized. Let's not put the cart before the horse. As mentioned in my email to you, Sammy has Down Syndrome. He is smart, he is kind, he makes us better people. How can we not continue to make their lives better and continue this policy for all those children that just need a little extra? for all those children that just need a little extra? Having a policy that stands behind those comments mean everything. Voting to eliminate this will make an impression on the community that you feel it isn't important. Remember that when you have the ability to vote or even further enhance this policy, your support and dedication to the families that are represented in the policy will be a more kinder and loving thing to do. Jenny Weiderholt's motto, kindness is free, says it all. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, next up, we have our superintendent's report.
All right. Just this time of year is a really busy time with staffing budgets and tonight's conferences as well as this week. So just a thank you to our educators for conferences and I haven't forgotten what these long weeks are like. So a huge thank you to them. And I did have some student events on here, but I will not share any of those because I know that you will be. So with that, the next thing, we have our cadence review. We do not have a cadence update tonight, but just in front of you, you have collectively where our leadership team is and the three strategic anchors of the district. Any questions?
So I just want to make the comment that the pieces of this, the engaged learners, effective operations, and communication and collaboration are in our current strategic plan. So where this comes from is from our strategic plan. It is part of everybody's goals within the district. So I just want to clarify like how this maps and everything.
Any other comments or questions? All right. And then we don't have the principals or I see one principal in the back. I don't know if we have. We have four out of five? Do we want to?
We don't have our elementary principals, right?
We don't have our principals yet? Two out of five. Okay, we're going to skip you guys for right now and we'll come back. What was that? All right. Next, we have our student school board representative updates. And so first, who's up first this time? We have Representative Stanky starting.
All right, I'm excited to share the middle school student activities for the month of February. To start off with middle school athletics, winter sports are obviously winding down sadly. The final ski and snowboard trip was rescheduled to yesterday, but I have yet to hear if that happened. I know weather has been kind of up and down. On top of this, gymnastics and boys' basketball were both wrapping up their seasons this month. Of course, this means opening the door to spring sports. Swim and dive started on the 24th and track and field and tennis are preparing for their spring weather and their seasons. As for arts, on the 10th, there was a fifth grade band concert and on the 20th, there were orchestra concerts. Additionally, auditions for the spring play titled Sally Cotter and the Quest We Follow were today and yesterday after school. These middle school performing arts programs have been crucial to the success of the arts programs in the high school as they provide middle schoolers with musical talent they need to grow and succeed. Students involved in these programs will go on to excel as students and members of the community with the experiences they gain. Speaking of excelling, Rockstar Awards, of course, continued this month. Just a reminder, Rockstar Awards recognize students who exemplify safety, responsibility, and respect. So congrats to those students recognized this month. Now for the fun parts, on the 13th, fifth grade had bingo after school in the cafeteria and on the 14th, they had their Buck Hill trip. The students traveled to Buck Hill for an exciting day on the slopes. Students were able to choose skiing or tubing. Many fifth graders tried skiing for the first time. Without a surprise, these fifth graders represented our community very well. Buck Hill staff mentioned several times about students' great behavior and understanding of safety while on the trip. Moving on with activities in the school, we all know that Valentine's Day is in February. So the middle schoolers rocked pink and red outfits on Valentine's Day. And then finally, on February 19th, students were able to enjoy a fun game of trivia at lunch.
Thank you. And I will say, my fifth grader was on the ski trip to Buck Hill and I asked him how it went and he was, "It was the best school day ever, Mom." Like, well, of course it was. We went skiing for the day, right? Who wouldn't like that? Or tubing. All right, any questions on that report? All right, thank you. Next up, we have Representative Banky.
All right, so starting off with Kennedy. So in the spirit of February being I Love to Read Month, students at both Kennedy and Pinecrest were invited to wear red and like shirts, like literal shirts, just for reading. Pretty cool, right? And then for this next week, during conferences, at the end of the week, students can attend the Scholastic Book Fair in the Media Center to find some great reads. And then for the monthly themes of Kennedy, this month's theme is Friendship Skills. And then students will learn strategies for inviting others to play, making amends, and handling name-calling. Those skills will help students make and keep friends. And then at Pinecrest this month, the PTA hosted a bingo night for Pinecrest families and I heard from their principal, it was a great hit. A lot of kids loved it. And then students have been able to pursue interest in art and music with many activities, like learning the structures of notes and sounds. And some also participate in the Panther Choir. And then as for art, all grades have been learning different forms depending on their grade.
All right, thank you. Any questions? All right, moving on to Representative Fresnackel.
All right, hello, I got the report for Hastings High School and Tilden Preschool for the month. So to start off with Hastings High School, although we had a pretty cold February until now, there is a lot of warmth in the hearts of many students with lots of new stuff to get up to. So to start off, Hastings High School introduced their second semester with an awesome new class, Raiders in Action. This class is taught by Mr. Colvin and it is our school's brand-new student-led TV show, airing on Tuesdays and Thursdays usually. Me and Victoria both work on the show and many students have had a blast watching and creating the show every week. And it's a lot of fun and it really gets us all engaged with the community really well. So and then to move on to sports, I don't have everything for sports for the month. I've got a good little overview because Hastings High School is always really busy with this sort of stuff. Both girls and boys hockey seasons came to an end in February. And Alpine and Nordic Skiing had James McNamara and Micah Trust and they both went to state a few weeks ago. Our show choirs hosted the 25th Annual Swinging on the River Competition this past weekend and from what I heard, I heard it was a big success. And Riverside actually are, that's the men and women show choir. They actually got first place at BK Gold and Rock the North competitions, which were a few weeks ago. And their poll show is next Monday, March 3rd. That's next Monday, I'm pretty sure. And I don't, I, they, no?
Next Tuesday.
Is it next Tuesday? I thought it was next Monday. Thank you. And we, what am I missing on this list? We, oh yes, Boys Wrestling has state tomorrow at Exo Energy Center. Thank you. And I'm hoping for the best for that. A lot of students are going to cheer on their classmates. And we end off this week with conferences and yet another three-day weekend. And now for Tilden, so this month at Tilden Preschool, it's all been about football, Valentine's Day, I Love to Read, and caring for our teeth. Preschool registration opens up for the 2025-2026 school year or it had opened on February 24th. And they encourage families to actually register early because spaces fill up quickly. Preschool conferences take place on the 27th and 28th. And the ECSE Birth to Three staff continue to provide services for children and their families in the child's natural environment. And the staff is busy making plans for kids who are transitioning into kindergarten this month. If we scroll down, there's some artwork titled Teeth. And if we scroll on more, another one titled Football. I think these are all really cute and I love seeing the art that Ms. Gore sends me every month. It's so sweet. Any questions?
Thank you. All right, and finally, we have Representatives for As Garcia.
Hello, so for February, McCullough, they have the conferences on Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday of this week. In celebration of Black History Month, McCullough has highlighted a selection of books for students to explore in the Media Center. Also, as part of I Love to Read Month, the school is also participating in an educational fundraiser to promote reading and replenish funds for the Parent Teacher Connection, or PTC, which supports activities for students, teachers, and families. Additionally, McCullough's fourth graders had an opportunity to visit Minnesota's History Center and Orchestra Hall in January for a hands-on educational experience. So those are some of the photos. On the left is the orchestra and the right is history. And then if we keep scrolling down for the ALC, students were able to tour Minnesota State College Southeast and Red Wing, gaining valuable insight and future opportunities. We also celebrated two graduates in January with one student already studying at Dakota County Technical College in Construction Management Program. Creative scheduling helped us add three more students this semester to the ALC. And we went from having last semester 15 full-time students and 24 part-time students. We now have 23 full-time and 30 part-time, reflecting its growing popularity and the expanded educational options it offers. So right below at the top one, that's at the college and the one on the bottom is just some students working in class with some other hands-on learning that they do. So that's all.
Thank you. Any questions? Yes, Director Biermer.
No question. I'd like to make a comment. We have four very talented people here and they should be recognized. Thank you.
Absolutely. All right, next up, we have the APAC and NAIPAC.
And as a tribal, as a Twin Cities representative of the Tribal Nations Education Committee, while my home community is several hours north of here, I share a deep commitment with all of Minnesota's indigenous peoples to ensure educational excellence for our native students, not just in Hastings, but also in Red Wing, where I'm the American Indian Education Program Director and throughout the state of what is called Minnesota as a representative on TNEC. For the sake of my family and every other American Indian family in the communities that I represent, we cannot afford to simply accept the status quo in the education system as it currently stands. When American Indian students do better, all students do better. Now, I would like to remind everybody that this conversation is required by law under Minnesota Statute 124D.78. Minnesota requires districts, charter schools, cooperatives, and tribally-controlled schools with 10 or more American Indian students to have an American Indian Parent Advisory Committee or in our case, Native American Parent Advisory Committee. Specifically, the statutes cite that school boards and American Indian schools must provide for the maximum involvement of parents and children enrolled in education programs, programs for elementary and secondary grades, special education programs, and support services. Districts, charter schools, cooperatives, and tribally-controlled schools with 10 or more American Indian students are required to submit annual compliance documents to the Office of American Indian Education by March 1 of each year. Also known as the Vote of Concurrents or Non- concurrents, annual compliance is a valuable opportunity for APAC members to meet and discuss whether or not they concur with the educational offerings that have been extended by the district to American Indian students. If the vote is one of non- concurrents, the committee must provide written recommendations for improvement to the school board at the time of the presentation. In the case of non- concurrents, the school board is given 60 days in which to respond in writing to the committee's recommendations. The board response must be signed by the entire school board and submitted to both the APAC and Department of Education. The resolution must be accompanied by parent advisory meeting minutes that show that they have been appraised by the district on the goals of the Indian Ed Program and measurement of progress toward those goals. Federally recognized American Indians have an immutable and inherited federal relationship and political status which is distinct from demographics, race, or ethnicity. In 2024 data, there was a 31% achievement gap in math for American Indian students compared to their white counterparts and 27.8% achievement gap in reading. In 2023, it was a 31.9% achievement gap in math and 26.3% in reading. The most recent attendance rates from the Minnesota Department of Education report card show similar disparities with 57.3% students attending consistently compared to 79.4% of white students. We had Director of Teaching Learning Andrew Hodges present some Fastbridge data at our most recent NAIPAC meeting and it was again shared during voluntary tribal consultations with TNEC this week that there are positive improvements in American Indian students for reading. We need to make that sustainable and replicable across all subjects. We have made improvements as a district from when I joined the APAC two years ago and again from 12 months ago when I presented before you all as chairperson for the first time. But we are still coming up on barriers that I have been asking for help in navigating for over two years now. Last year, we asked for six things, adding a dedicated staff member specifically for American Indian education programming, culture and language implementation, 100% staff development attendance through tribal relations training through the Office of American Indian Education, district-wide endorsement and promotion of new standards and ongoing efforts, access to relevant academic data, graduation rates, special education and disciplinary data, and transparency and up-to-date information surrounding Indian education programming budgets. Hastings accomplished three of those that we know of. We hired an amazing liaison. We can make data requests to the people we're in regular contact with and get the information we asked for and we get monthly budget updates at our meetings. But the last two, we should have already been kept informed of from the beginning as part of the compliance packet that I will be passing around for signature after this. There's a box to check if NAIPAC had been given the data to make informed decisions. This is not always the case for the current members of our parent committee. For the requests that have not been met, for language and culture classes, it is now a statutory requirement to have specific K-12 classes implemented into the course schedules as we have met the 100-student threshold, which is a good problem to have. We can work together on coming up with a solution. We have not been notified if there was attendance at tribal relations trainings offered through the Office of American Indian Education or what specific staff development was offered for tribal relations. I really hope it is more than just a box to check off for license renewal or to get CEUs. District-wide standards review should already be ongoing as standards are updated and rolled out for different subjects each year. But NAIPAC and American Indian community in Hastings as a whole have not been updated on what American Indian lessons have been taught or how that is being recognized in the schools. Three out of six isn't great. Now, we have voted non-concurrent again. And again, as I stated last year, it's not a reflection on the work that you all do, the people that I have conversations with. I really do appreciate you all and the work that you do for our students here in Hastings. Our achievement gap has stayed the same for two years in a row. I've only been chairperson of the committee for a year and a half now, but I've been asking for some of the items since before I became later of the committee. And now I'll read off our resolutions here. Resolution 1, Federal 506 Forms Integration and Title VI Application. Whereas accurate identification of American Indian students is essential for appropriate educational services and funding, and whereas federal 506 forms are the recognized standard for documenting American Indian student status, and whereas completed 506 forms enable the district to apply for Title VI funding Indian Education Formula grant through the U.S. Department of Education, and whereas current enrollment procedures do not consistently capture this critical information resulting in significant loss of potential federal funding for American Indian education programs, be it resolved that Hastings Public Schools shall include federal 506 forms as a standard component in all district enrollment packets beginning in the 2025-26 school year, conduct a retroactive collection campaign for all currently enrolled American Indian students lacking completed 506 forms, provide annual training to all enrollment staff regarding the importance in proper processing of these forms, report quarterly to APAC on 506 form completion rates, and utilize the completed 506 forms to prepare and submit annual applications for Title VI Indian Education Formula grant funding, with all such funds to be directed toward supplemental American Indian education programs. Resolution 2, American Indian Culture and Language Program and Protections. Whereas American Indian students in our district show significantly improved academic outcomes when connected to their cultural heritage language, whereas the cultures and languages of Dakota and Ojibwe are specific to the first peoples of this land that is now known as Minnesota, and whereas discontinuity in cultural instruction undermines educational equity for American Indian students, be it resolved that Hastings Public Schools shall designate the American Indian Culture and Language classes as protected curricular offerings exempt from standard budget reduction considerations. Guarantee the teaching positions dedicated to these classes shall be maintained regardless of district-wide staffing adjustments. Establish a minimum annual budget allocation for cultural materials and curriculum development that cannot be repurposed for other district needs and commit to understanding rather than merely maintaining these offerings as American Indian students. and commit to understanding rather than merely maintaining these offerings as American Indian student enrollment increases. Resolution three, American Indian Education Staffing Expansion. Whereas Hastings Public Schools currently serves a hundred and eight, no, Alyssa just told me we have a hundred and fifteen now. Um, American Indian students across its educational sites. And whereas the district currently employs only one staff member dedicated to American Indian education. Whereas the Department of Education recommends a student to Indian education staff ratio of roughly fifty to one. Whereas the current one hundred and eight to one ratio severely limits individualized support, cultural programming and family outreach capabilities. Whereas inadequate staffing directly contributes to the achievement disparities documented in district data. Be it resolved that Hastings Public Schools shall create and fund an additional full-time American Indian education specialist beginning with for twenty twenty-five, twenty-six school year. Ensure the American Indian Education Department positions are classified as permanent certified staff rather than gra- grant dependent. Develop a recruitment plan prioritizing qualified American Indian candidates, particularly those with connections to local tra- tribal communities. Designate specific responsibilities for each staff member to maximize support across elementary, middle and high school levels and establish a three-year staffing plan that increases American Indian education personnel proportionally as American Indian student enrollment grows. There's two more, so hold on. Intentional space holding for American Indian community. Whereas meaningful consultation with American Indian communities is mandated by both federal and state requirements. Whereas the American Indian Parent Advisory Committee or NAIPAC requires consistent institutional support to fulfill its advisory function. And whereas the American Indian perspectives have been historically marginalized in educational governance. Be it resolved that the Hastings Public School Board and building principals shall reserve a standing agenda item at each regular school board meeting for APAC and American Indian Community updates and concerns as needed from APAC. Ensure American Indian representation on all district-wide committees and strategic planning initiatives. Establish a formal protocol requiring consultation with APAC on any sp- any policy decisions potentially impacting American Indian students. Provide annual training for all administrators on government-to-government relationships between educational institutions and sovereign tribal nations. Lastly, resolution five, Permanent School Fund Educational Justice Initiative. Whereas the Minnesota Permanent School Fund was established through treaties that ceded Dakota and Ojibwe lands to the state of Minnesota. And whereas these lands continue to generate revenues that benefit the General Education Fund without specific benefit to American Indian students. And whereas this represents a historical injustice that perpetuates educational inequities for descendants of the original land stewards. Be it resolved that Hastings Public Schools shall develop and implement a comprehensive educational unit on the history of the Permanent School Fund, including its origin in tribal land acquisition for inclusion in the district curriculum. Calculate the proportional benefit received by the district from the Permanent School Fund annually. Allocate an equivalent amount from the district's general fund specifically for American Indian education programming. Advocate at the state level in partnership with tribal nations for reform of permanent school fund distribution policies to provide direct benefit to American Indian students throughout Minnesota. And report annually to the community on both the funds received from the Permanent School Fund and the equivalent amount redirected to American Indian education programming. Now, I have our annual paperwork that um, we'll need to sign, sorry, I'm trying to catch my breath. Thank you again, everybody, um, for allowing us to have this space. Thank you, Dr. Champo. We met yesterday and for allowing Hastings to be a part of voluntary tribal consultations with TNEC. Um, it is through those conversations where we have been able to make progress to where we're at now and continue to move forward. So, thank you.
So just to add a little context to that, so there are different requirements depending on how many uh, students we have. So in October, which is the date that we go by, um, looking forward, our student count is ninety-nine and so one hundred is where there's a threshold for some additional requirements, which now is one hundred fifteen. So as the, uh, the conversation is about the language requirements, that, those are requirements based on the number of students. I just wanted to clarify. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have five principals yet? I see four, three, three, nope, okay, moving on. All right, when we get two more, we will go back. Uh, next we have a strategic plan review update.
Okay, so that, um, our current strategic plan was the first one. No, that's okay. That Lindy just had up there and so I think there's a request to have that up a little bit later too. But as we were looking at uh, leadership goals and where we are with the cadence of responsibility, those are those strategic anchors on the right, engaged learners, the effective operations and communication and collaboration. And if you look at our draft right now, um, so nothing changed in the vision mission because that wasn't part of the conversation. MSBA came in, there was some community engagement. We had um, involvement with as the survey with our parents, our staff and our students in grades four through twelve and took all of that data and put it together and these are the core pillars that are being recommended. So it's safe and respectful learning environments, effective operations, communication and collaboration, academic excellence and equity and staff support and retention. And so under each of those, there are also strategic anchors. And so the intent of moving forward with this was uh, the next community in um, input session to relook at some of this. Internally, we've had uh, leadership, we've had all of our principals, uh, go through an activity that we're also going to ask our community to walk through and then continue to uh, develop this or make any adjustments. There's also been a request with this to um, put together an operational plan as to what that looks like um, specifically for each of those statements. So it's one thing to say sustainable practices and then what does that mean? So really an internal uh, management document of who's responsible and, and how that plays out. Questions, comments?
All right, I look forward to the continuing conversations on this and getting this completed. Uh, we do need to set a date for our next community input session for sure. Uh, that was supposed to be last week but was canceled due to the rescheduling of our work session. Any other questions, comments? All right. Moving along, we have the Building Construction Fund project update with Ms. Suebert.
So just a quick reminder that the Building Construction Fund accounts for the money the district received from the voter-approved bonds that was for school renovations and improvements. So we're in thirty-six thousand approximately left in the fund. And if there's any questions, I can take them.
Of that nine thirty, how much is really just processing? Not exactly, of course.
I would say of five, six hundred and fifty thousand.
Yeah, good, good, thanks. Keep up the good work.
All right, any other questions? All right. Um, next up, we have uh, the legal, uh, the data request update from Ms. Moon.
Good evening. Uh, our legal bills this month did not contain any charges that were related to data requests. We have had two additional data requests since the last school board meeting when I reported. One was actually a request that came in early January that did not get reported at the last meeting and we had one additional uh, request that came in this morning. We currently have four requests in process. Two of those are anticipated to be out by, in the next few days or by early next week and we have two additional that we're working on right now.
Thank you, and I do have one question. Are any of those uh, anonymous requests or not?
The new ones?
Right.
No, they are not anonymous.
Thank you. And if folks don't know what that means, we'll ta- we're gonna be talking about that later tonight as well. All right, so next we have to talk about our Board Director vacancy. Uh, so per statute, uh, we are allowed to appoint someone to fill uh, the open seat that we have uh, until December thirty-first of this year. We will have a special election uh, in November for that open seat. And so we need to discuss as a board how we want to go through with the appointment. Um, I know previously when we had an uh, an open seat on the board, um, we had agreed that we were going to um, uh, basically kind of take resumes or take uh, input as far as, you know, interest why, had somebody, you know, write up something as far as why they were interested in getting on the board and then we were going to interview. Um, I think because it was such a short timeframe, I think it was less than two months that this person would serve, nobody applied. So we never went through with the process. Um, so, uh, so just kind of wondering where uh, board members think uh, we want to be with an appointment. Do we want to just ask for letters uh, from folks who are interested in being on the board? And then ha- my thought is, you know, we have to assign dates as far as when we would finish accepting those. And then if we want to do interviews or if we want to just have a discussion as a board and decide who we're going to appoint from there, it's completely up to us. There's nothing in statute that dictates how we have to do the appointment. So I'll open it up for comments. Director Zuzik.
I, I'm not opposed to an application process. Uh, the other thing that we could look at is in our most recent election, what were, who was the next closest person, the next closest person, the next closest person? And see if those persons would have an interest. And the reason I bring that up is this would have otherwise been an elected position. And so maybe the, the most recent election has some bearing on our, on our decision. And I offer that as a suggestion, but I'm, I'm not opposed to an application process.
All right, um, anyone else have comments? Director Dressley?
So I would support a application process, but I think we need to be really um, intentional about how we do that, if that's gonna be the course we take and laying out dates, how many people are we gonna interview, all those things. I think we need to be real intentional and be forward-thinking about them.
Okay. Other thoughts?
I like the application process consideration, just simply because I think we should really be intentional about choosing someone who is, has values like Jenny did. Um, I think we should really be cognizant about trying to find a match to what the public was asking for in that election.
Thank you. Director Burns?
Yeah, I would say I appreciate uh, an application process. I think um, just, I'm so, oh my gosh, I'm so sorry about the, the title piece. But I really like what you brought up with the logistics regarding how many applications come in and being able to discern and understand how many interviews would take place. I do appreciate a good interview guide with scoring um, and that taking place with the entirety of the board posting those questions.
All right.
I agree with the entirety of the board in an application process.
Okay, so sounds like application process is the direction we want to go. Do we want to actually create an application or just have folks submit a letter of basically why do you want to be on the board and explain what, maybe what skills or what, what, what you bring to the board? Or something along those lines? What are thoughts? Vice President Dressley?
So I'm just gonna say, let's say we, just by chance, we get a hundred letters. How would we determine which ones we're gonna interview with the parameters of a hundred letters? So I'm just saying maybe.
I would love for a hundred people to want to do this, but I think you're very optimistic. I mean, as fun as it is and all, um, but uh, yeah, um, yeah, I think um, I, I, I I think that we have that conversation once we have the letters, is my opinion, right? And, and determine how, I mean, maybe we'll get one and then it's pretty clear. And maybe, maybe we get five, right? And then we, we kind of go from there. I think it's, it's hard to say right now. With what, what may be out there, honestly. I don't know if folks are open to kind of winging it a little bit like that, but I think maybe we should set a, a, a timeline here. The, and I'm just looking at the calendar, um, our next work session is the twelfth of March. However, it is only a half an hour long and we may have other business that we have to attend to because we have a retreat scheduled with um, with someone coming in at six thirty. I mean, we could always try to start the meeting early if we want to tack on some more time. I know that's difficult for people's work schedules to get here earlier than six though. So my thought, I don't know what my thought is. Cause that's, that's a challenge right there unless we wanted to add in an extra meeting, but then we've got spring break in there. We could, I don't know, we could look at adding in an extra meeting just for this before our regular meeting, like the twenty-fourth or twenty-fifth of March. If we want to go that direction and have and review the applications and talk about interviews and set an interview schedule from that. Thoughts?
I would suggest we do it at our April work session. Just thought. Our April work session yet, but I know that our March meeting is. Got a lot of stuff on it already.
It does. Uh, what do, what uh, what are other thoughts? Director Biermeyer, you got your finger on the trigger?
I just don't know how far out we want to be. So what kind of deadline are we looking at here as far as?
It's totally up to us.
I mean, it's.
Thirty days after they're appointed.
Okay, all right.
Selected.
I mean, the, that word, the April session? I'm for that.
When is, when is our April meeting? I don't even know. Would it be the ninth? Or something? Seems like a long way out, to be honest. It's a month and a half. Director Zuzik?
When is the March work session? Oh, thanks, thanks. I appreciate that.
The March work session is the twelfth.
Is it my?
The twelfth.
Twelfth.
And then the twenty-sixth is the regular meeting.
So March twelfth, eh, you know, it's, we're not asking for a lot of documentation, we're not asking for a lot of stuff. So I think that that could be a, a time. It would just be um, the effort that we would have at that meeting to look through everything.
You're saying on the twelfth? We, yeah, we only have a half an hour total for everything that we're gonna cover. That's we only hang up on the twelfth unless we, unless we want to do it after our retreat. We could tack it onto the, that might be a late night, but we could tack it onto the end if we want to go that route. Cause what would?
I recommend April ninth.
Eight o'clock, it ends.
It ends at eight? We could hang out for another hour, right? Eight to nine? Is that doable? That's two weeks, but, oh, that's two weeks.
Yeah, exactly.
That's not a whole lot of time to advertise for anyone to.
And we do have to advertise.
Mm-hmm. All right. Yeah, do we want to do it? What do we, I don't even know what we have on for that meeting at this point. Yeah, we could tack it on to the, to the regular meeting on the twenty-sixth and have the discussion there. And that's, that would be choosing who we want to interview. Um, and then obviously we, we could interview and then at the April work session, we could come together and decide who we choose to appoint. That feels better to me, honestly, the timing, not stretch it out quite so far. Okay, I have one thumbs up. Thumbs up, twenty-sixth, all right. So everyone is aware.
But that means uh, interviews between the twenty-seventh and April eighth, yeah?
Yep, yep. So we'd have to add another meeting.
You just need to be due March twenty-sixth.
Due March twenty-sixth, so we have one month from today. Um, folks to apply or send in, submit a letter as far as why you are interested in serving in this position through December twenty, or sorry, December thirty-first, twenty twenty-five.
Due by three o'clock so that copies can be made.
Thank you.
Or do we want to have it due by the twenty-fifth, end of the day twenty-fifth? Let's do that. Well. It'd be, well, okay, but sorry, let's think about this a little bit. The board is gonna want to have those ahead of time so we can read them. So can we go through the twenty-first? Friday, the twenty-first? By like noon, noon, so hopefully we can get them for that weekend. Sorry, sorry to keep thinking out loud. All right, so letters to the district office, to Lindy specifically, e- via email. Two thumbs up from Lindy.
Or drop off at the district.
Or drop off at the, yeah, drop off at the district office or email to Lindy Humble. Due by noon on March 21st. Advising why you are interested in doing this work. All right. Good, everybody? On that, okay. Next up, we need to speak to filling Jenny's positions. First one is the Minnesota State High School League. She had told me when we were at the annual conference that they never actually had a meeting last year. So it is very light in responsibilities is my understanding. So just looking for someone who's interested in filling that liaison position.
Madam Chair, I'd volunteer to do that. I've coached three sports, one sport at a varsity level, that being soccer. Another one being softball from ninth grade through seventh grade. And then what I would only call is coaching malfeasance in basketball.
All right. I don't know if anyone wants to follow that. If we're good, I'm good with that. Thank you for volunteering. All right, and then next we have an opening on the Community Collaboration Committee. She was the chair. That does not necessarily mean that you need to be the chair. That will be the next conversation. Director Milner?
I would be very interested in doing that.
Okay. All right, thank you. Sounds good. And then the next question, so we have Directors Milner, Brunz and Biermeyer, who are the Community Collaboration Committee. Which one of you would like to be the chair of that committee going forward?
I can do that if nobody else wants to.
All right, sounds good. Thank you. Then we need to talk about a date for our next community engagement, which we referenced earlier tonight regarding the community input session for the strategic plan. So we need a date for that. March, no, that is not, sorry. The, the goal is to hopefully have all of us there. That one doesn't work for me and I think we, I, I would appreciate anyway, having more than a couple of weeks notice for this event. Yep, understood. Does, I know on spring break is the week of the 17th, does like, I don't know, the 24th?
You still in Florida?
25th?
Lindy, can you check the? Thank you.
Okay, 27th? What time does it go until? Starts at seven? Do we want to keep it to an hour and do six to seven? And have it at the high school? I should probably. Concerts at the high school. We don't want to conflict with any concerts. Yeah, I could make that work. Is that okay with all the board members, 27th at six, from six to seven PM? Okay, all right, sounds great. Put that on your calendars, write that on my notes. Okay, and then we will advertise that so that folks know about it.
Madam Chair, does it make sense to schedule another community collaboration meeting? And the reason I say that is we're looking then at really April, May. And we've got some big lifting to do and we need public input on budget reductions.
I know the conversation last year was to avoid May because we had a pretty poor turnout and I know May is crazy busy for most families with kids. With all the end of the year stuff. So yeah, we want to look at a date in April. The, the, as, as we said, the other one is the 27th. Would we want to move towards like mid-April?
What about the 17th?
17th? Do we have any activities going on that night? We can see, no. April 17th? That works for me as well. Anybody else have a conflict? Okay. Okay, so that'll be April 17th, also at 6:00 PM. Good, and those are, we hold those in the, in the high school lecture hall. So everyone is welcome to attend and certainly contribute to the conversation. All right, that is set. Okay, how many principals do we have now?
All of them.
All five, hey, awesome. All right, well, welcome to. Welcome up front here. We are going to go back in our report or back in our agenda to hear the principal building behavior reports.
How'd conferences go?
Good.
I think we're, we're open to any questions that you might have. You know, we, we kind of had the narrative last week and updated some of the numbers and having it by month by month for us. Any, any questions in general that we didn't have from last week?
And the one other comment I would add is just the attendance field on row 15 was a result of last week's conversation. So you'll, you'll see on those at all three levels.
Thank you.
So 15 and 16 are kind of linked together. And how it could be a little bit different is in the sense, a student could get a three-day warning letter or a family could, and then a five-day warning letter in the same month if that triggered, they continue to have absences. We might send that twice in one month. Or a 10-day, which is, we're leaning towards a doctor note for any absences to try to get them to come to school more regularly.
So that's why those numbers aren't exactly the same.
Yeah.
I do, I do have a, wow. Just looking at the numbers since the beginning of the year, right, they've really gone up in January and February. Do you know if that's typical for mid-year?
You will send a referral until.
Okay, until they've ran the, through the threshold. So now they're meeting the threshold and okay, now I understand what that means. Okay, thank you.
Clarifying question, Madam Chair. Does that mean that the attendance referral data is inclusive in the overall referral data? It's separate?
It is separate. You're right. Yeah, I appreciate that as well, yeah. And one thing that we worked on administratively too, and Principal Winn can kind of speak to it. They might chunk, we are doing cumulative throughout the year at the elementary level. It makes more sense at the secondary to kind of do it in like the quarter base or something. They do it in a smaller chunk of the year to try to monitor that and target which ones need that a little bit more strategically at their level for their unique circumstances as well.
Also something just when, when it comes to behavior or to attendance. It is an ongoing conversation that we have with our school social workers as well, so that we can really understand each individual circumstance.
So I would like to ask about that. I know at a certain point the county is supposed to get involved. And I've heard from other board members in Dakota County, not here, but that they've kind of struggled with actually having them involved and getting, getting them to. I don't know how to say this, but I'm going to say it. Getting them to do kind of what they're legally supposed to be doing with helping us with resolving this and getting the kids back into, into school. Have we had any of those kinds of concerns or str- you're smirking.
It's not shocking what you're saying, so let's put it that way. They're trying, but it, it hasn't, we haven't seen the movement that we've wanted. In the 10 years I've been here, it's usually, I've been, I think we've all been asking the teachers to say when they, as a teacher to the family, when they say, I'm worried because Matt's not at school and this is what I'm seeing. Those are the successes that we're having is trying to get them to school better than the county involvement. It just hasn't pivoted.
And I think the important thing for us at the elementary level is it's opening the line of communication and looking for ways that we can support families so that attendance is not a barrier. And if there are other things happening in their lives, we're looking to see how can we support? How can we help coach and help them understand the importance of regular attendance? And so opening that, that door for us is really important. Sometimes it is nice to have the county to help support that idea. But really from our perspective, it's, it's more important that we're making that connection and building that relationship.
And when we think about attendance referrals, it, on that 10-day letter, those are all excused absences. And it's a fine line of saying, hey, are they really excused absences? Are they really sick or, or not? And you kind of got to get to know the family and the child and that takes time. But we, we tread that carefully and want to be respectful of the family. And then you kind of get a, kind of a feel over the, you know, the first couple of years of the time that they're with you. And then usually that kind of settles in. So you might see, I, maybe the first year or two where that might be a little bit higher. And then each year you see less and less and they're in school more often. Because really it's a 13-year relationship that we're creating, not just that tight window of, hey, how did we get to here? It's the long game. Yeah.
Well, I guess the next question, is, is there anything that the board can do to help foster that relationship better? So that we can get as many kids into schools as possible?
I really feel like it's a school-level management. Yeah, yeah. I think that's the, the relationship piece that we make, for sure.
And a little bit with the increase has been the work in previous years was to try to have the elementary system to be more similar in ways to the middle school. They were using the letters, the formal letter system probably more frequently than the three elementary schools. So we had work on streamlining, even the, the way the letter and what is in the letters was streamlined throughout the system or was aligned throughout the system and then using that more consistently. So they're not getting culture shock when they get to be a fifth grader, that it's just more, this is a practice and it isn't a blame game, it's just an awareness. Because a lot of times they're like, oh, I didn't realize it crept up to seven or eight days. And well, okay, it has, so let's, let's try to get them at school when we can.
I also appreciate the, the continued support for our school nurses because attendance and, and school nurses are often strongly connected. And I feel like we have really strong nurses currently and so thank you for that support.
All right. Director Biermeyer?
I had received, I'm receiving some emails this week. Do, do we specifically have bullying in, in a category? Or do you, do you have a problem with that at the elementary level? I wouldn't think it would be quite as much, but just a concern that I've had people bring to me.
So it, it's kind of interesting how people use the word bullying. And so when there's conflict, most people today will call it bullying. So we'll get a call or a communication that says my child was bullied today out of recess. When you talk about maybe a legal definition of bullying, there's, is there an imbalance of power? Is it repetitive? Was there harm? And so I would call most situations where we have conflict. And there certainly is conflict. True incidences of bullying where it is repetitive and imbalance of power, where somebody doesn't feel like they have the ability to say no or to, to get away from that situation. Those are pretty rare. But is there, there's conflict. There's 500 kids or 450 kids. You know, like there certainly is conflict. Yeah. Yeah.
Just to add to that also, so there's policy and I'm looking at Lindy to try to look up the number. But there's a policy that has a bullying form that's attached to it. So if and when you do have some of those real concerns and encourage people to fill that out because there's, it's very time-bound when those types of concerns come forward in that very formal way.
Any other?
It's 514 is the policy number.
There you go.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Director Brunz?
I'll throw out a question that, and you probably feel like you've already answered it, but I just want like, so the role of the school at the truancy hearing is to identify the barriers that might persist. So if you're getting to that point or just in the informal conversations you're having, are there trends in the barriers that you're spotting? And do they exist among different groups or types of students that we can be cognizant of?
The ones that I've been involved with, it's usually more like the habits in the morning. Like it's hard to get them going. So it's literally been talking about, okay, should we get a alarm clock or whatever? Or should the parent put an alarm clock in their room and start some of those routines? That's really like those behavior contracts, that some of those elements are added in there and formalizing what the student needs to do, the parent needs to do, and what can the school do? That's kind of what the big ones have been over the history for me anyways.
I, I think something that's we've recognized recently too is sometimes this is more of an indicator that a, a parent might need support. And so then we're able to help kind of open some doors, make some connections that way. And it's really not a student issue. And so in a way it does help us can support the whole family or to be able to help them get in touch, get connected with the support that they need.
And then the, the ones that I'm thinking of right now, maybe as birth to age three, there might've been something significant that happened and really trying to protect. So like if there's a sniffle, if there's, hey, my, my tummy hurts, well, okay, you stay home then. Because there was that trauma earlier in life and it's hard to let that go. So there's just maybe sometimes overprotection.
I appreciate that. Just trying to see it through resource allocation. So if we're trying to find a way to help you all out or help students out.
Just one more comment because I know the letters can sometimes be frustrating for some. But there is also responsibility on behalf of the district to make sure that we do have child find so that those things are being recorded. And you mentioned the county, that type of thing. But it is the expectation to understand why students are gone, so to understand the illness or whatever it might be.
And, and when we work with the county, you know, so when it gets to that level, it's still just developing the plan. It just so happens that the county worker is sitting in the room doing the same thing that we would be doing without the county worker there.
My thought is, right, they're, they just are in the position that they can offer county resources if it is something with the parents and they're, they're having challenges and whatnot. And obviously they have way more resources to help them out than we would, so appreciate that. Vice President Dressley?
I don't have any questions. I just want to say thank you guys. Having it in this format is pretty awesome. So thank you.
Yes, thank you. All right, anything else? All right, thank you.
Get back to work.
All right, next up, middle school and high school. Welcome.
We can entertain any questions?
I'm going to start with the same question at your level, the bullying aspect or what does that look like?
At the high school level, I would say I would probably echo Principal Esterbee's sentiments exactly. The level of actual bullying is next to zero at the high school in terms of the formal reporting as Dr. Champ referenced to that specific policy and report. Again, conflict, yes. Repetitive imbalance of power is pretty rare. And those typically are addressed very early on. And resolutions, sometimes we put no contact orders in-house in place for students to avoid each other by mutual agreement. So those are the kind of early steps and interventions we do before it gets to the bullying. We have a great student population that lets us know when things aren't going well.
And I really don't have anything to add to middle school because it's the exact same for the elementary and high school as well.
I appreciate the clarification.
I don't have any questions. I'll just make the same comment that I made to the elementary school principals. Thank you guys for putting it in this format. I really appreciate it. It's, we'll be able to look at it over time, so thank you.
I think I heard earlier too, just a question about the cell phone policy and, and making sure that the integrity of that has followed through, through the year. I know sometimes starting strong and, but can you just speak to that at this time of the year?
Yeah, at the high school, we, we actually have a, our site leadership team meeting discussed that in, in detail. And I think I might've mentioned at the work session last week that we went through numbers and kind of re-upped our own commitment at semester break. Hey, is it, have we gone through semester? Are we losing a little bit of steam with our, kind of holding kids accountable? And back at it, it is, yeah. And kids are, again, still reporting that they appreciate it. And I, I think our school board representatives have mentioned it too, that it's just, it's a different feeling in the building when students are actually interacting and collaborating with each other instead of on the device. So it's been a really good change.
And I would say at the middle school, with our procedure being, so the phones are supposed to be stored in the locker from 7:55 to 2:35 or in our office, it's a little more clear. When you look at our data, you know, it starts out a little bit higher and, you know, what we're seeing right now is we get a few first occurrences. So I would say right now.
So I would say right now it's kind of recalibrating our students' majority, and I'm the eighth grade admin. And they get a hard time for me because they're getting used to having the cell phone kind of procedure the first time as middle school students. So I would say the biggest struggle, and we try to talk to them about that, coach them all the time, you see a lot of more first offenses coming up in this data through as of last Friday. For our students right now, you see those first offenses coming up, they keep their phone in their pocket. You know, they don't want to keep it in their locker, they don't want to store it in the office, and then that phone kind of vibrates. And then all of a sudden they're pulling out in their, you know, in the hallway. And that's kind of where that coaching element saying, really that research, once you remove that cell phone from your body, that allows you to focus more. And that's kind of where that coaching is, you'll see, and you'll see at the at the middle school, the number of students with a cell phone referral is less because, you know, the high school has that procedure in between class. And that, you know, opens it up, once you open it up, there's a little bit more easiness to, I would say violate that rule. So when you look at that, 10% of our student body essentially are just under that accounts for all of our cell phone violations. So our students are doing a good job, but that's why you see those repeats kind of, you know, add in there. But right now what we're seeing here, and I definitely boundary testing here, I was talking to the high school admin at dinner and I said, you know, our eighth graders, they kind of want that freedom of ninth grade, but you know what, we're not right there. We got a few more months so they can still earn some time of our rules and regulations of the middle school.
Thank you.
The other, sorry, the other piece to share, I think I mentioned it just for public consumption, that high school started off 85% of our early on referrals total were related to cell phones, we're down into the low 40s now.
That's awesome. And I have to speak to, I know, Mr. Nguyen, you had commented a few months ago that the lunchroom is really, really loud in the middle school now. Well, I volunteered at Raider Cove and holy cow, is it loud in there? It's, it's awesome to hear the conversation going on.
I would say it's the best comparison is like if you go like one of those indoor parks or if you're at like Mall of America on a busy day. It is like that, it's not like bad, it's just kids are talking and that's a great thing. Now we just kind of have to get the volume level down, you know, one thing at a time.
To give some context, in the Raider Cove, the doors were shut to the cafeteria. So what I'm hearing is the noise bouncing around the walls, coming through the hallway and into the door into the Raider Cove. So, yeah.
The impressive part, two things that are terrifying in my office is when you get the passing time when the kids are going from like, you know, fifth and sixth are transitioning. And you're like, what's going on? Or like they have the kids in the little flex space and they're moving their chairs and it's like, you know, getting towards the end of the hour. And I'm like, is there like an earthquake going on? Like, it gets very scary, those kids, they are moving with all their might and those fifth graders still, they can carry a lot of noise, so.
All right, any other questions or comments? Vice Chair Dressley?
So I just have a quick question, I guess, the success plans for the high school. Is that number and they're populated correctly?
Yes, and I talked to the assistant principals, we can bring them up if we need to. But most success plans, again, kind of like Principal Esterby said, those are at the management level, lots of conversations, lots of support from parents. Not the specific plan. And I did notice in the policy that was just adopted, there is a room in there for a mandatory signature. Those plans typically are in agreement between the high school, sometimes it's over the phone. It's not necessarily a paper copy of a formalized plan. And that's what we've been operating on this year.
And at the middle school, we're having more kids or those third offense plus where we're having to get in that conversation where it's like, all right, not only is the parent picking it up, we're like, hey, I have to have you turn your phone in or I'm even checking with the student, make sure they're not bringing a phone in. Because it has become to that issue. Now, I'm considering a success plan, but it's on a formalized written document. And we also try to work with the student, like I might say, you know, you're going to be doing this till spring break. And then, you know, if it works better, then we'll give it to the end of the year, trying to give some incentive that like the kids need to turn it in. And work with the kid on that too.
All right, thank you. Anything else? Director Zuzak?
Do you anticipate, and I ask this of my board colleagues, not of me, or not of, not of the principals, pardon me. But do you anticipate that principals would report and show up every time on the data? We're just going to see the data unless you're here or unless we ask for a review. So I, I, like, like Director Dressley, I'm very, or Vice Chair Dressley, I'm very happy with the way that the data's, you know, been presented. But it's not going to be our expectation that you report month by month. You've got lives to live.
No, the expectation has been quarterly and I don't see that changing.
Thank you.
So, yeah.
Thank you.
Yep, but just good to have monthly buckets because sometimes, right, when you report a quarter, well, the way it has worked out, it was like you were reporting September, November, or September, October numbers. And then the next quarter, you're reporting November, December, January. So the numbers look different, obviously, because you've got three months versus two months, and so this is very helpful. All right.
Yeah, well done.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, and I see Representative DePell came into the room, so we're gonna move to that. And we will discuss our legislative priorities for this year that we determined last week, right? It was a week ago. So welcome. Come on up. So just want to introduce Representative Tom DePell. He is our local representative in the House and he is on the Education Finance and Education Policy Committee. And I understand you're actually a school board chair yourself. So if you just want to hit your mic, we can hear from you, the folks online can hear from you as well. So thank you for joining us tonight. We are, I guess, part of what I'd like to talk about is kind of what you're seeing from your, from your committee meetings and what, how things are feeling there. And then we'd like to walk through kind of our legislative priorities that we came through or that we came up with last week.
Great, so from the committee hearings, we hear over and over from superintendents and principals that we should be focusing on academic outcomes and academic achievement. That should be a major focus. And apart from that, there have been difficulties trying to adapt to a multitude of different mandates that were handed out last session, some of which weren't funded. And many of which there wasn't adequate and isn't adequate time to install all those different items and time for school years. And so a big portion of, I think, these hearings is to hear from superintendents and principals on what we can do to support you all to the best of our ability. And make sure from a state level, we aren't telling you what to do all the time. We instead are giving you freedom to teach these children to the best of your ability. Because local control truly is the best control, especially when it comes to our children and their education. We know how to educate our children better than the state does. And that, that has been a big resounding gong, I think, out of the Capitol as we've started off here. So, you know, frankly, that is a big part of what the conversation has been. There have been other peripheral items too, in terms of school safety. We just had a hearing today on safety mechanisms within schools. If something very terrible happened, if there was an active shooter or something of that nature. And what the state could do to help, whether it be funding for schools to be able to create any degree of mitigation for something of that nature. And then beyond that, creating an environment to where parents are empowered in their children's education. Whether that's with another thing that we, excuse me, I just had Culvers. I've only had a little bit to eat today and I enjoyed the Culvers down the street. And so, yeah, Parents' Bill of Rights, that's another item that we just heard in Education Policy Committee today. We want to support parents to the highest degree possible in their children's education. We truly, at the Capitol, have been trying to push out the message that involved parents in their children's education provides the best outcome for their children. So that's kind of a broad overview without getting into great detail and I'm happy to answer any questions.
I guess one question I have, is there hope for there to be bipartisan partnership when it comes to education? Do you think this year, are you feeling that? Because I think, right, I think the vast majority of Minnesotans, vast majority of of senators and representatives want kids to do well. And so I'm just wondering what you're feeling from that aspect at this point.
I do believe that there is. There are a couple of different bills that went through committee over the course of the last couple of weeks. And there has been bipartisan support for some of those. On the bigger questions, bigger holistically, on, for instance, the mandates and things of that nature. There may be some rollback of some of those mandates. I don't think it'll be a complete repeal of that. And there are certain things that were good that were, the reading, the, yeah, Read Act was something that really the consensus has been, hey, this is really good. This focused on getting students literate and being able to read. If, if you can't read, as we've said before, if you can't read, every book is banned. And that's was a really hot topic and continues to be. But we have to make sure that every student can read. That is a primary goal definitively, and from there, they can succeed. So there are different areas, I think, where there is agreement, yes. That's the short answer. Broadly, we'll have to wait and see about that.
Thank you, and I would just like to let you know, we got a presentation last month about our progress to, so under the Read Act, we adopted new curriculum. And we are seeing significant progress in the literacy rates here in our district, so it's fantastic.
Awesome.
So yes, absolutely agree that that was a great, great addition. All right, other question, Director Zuzak?
Representative DePell, please comment a little further on the Parents' Bill of Rights. Does that include vouchers or anything like vouchers where public funds for education transferred to private schools?
No, it doesn't have anything to do with that. Parents' Bill of Rights really just reiterates that the parents have the final call in their children's education. So what that would mean specifically is if their child was going to school and being asked to do something, whether it be philosophically or religiously or anything of that nature, that the parents would have the final say in that and that it wouldn't be the school telling the parents what the kids are going to learn.
Yeah, I would comment that presently they do have that right.
That's absolutely true.
And, and I, so that's not, that will not be a change for Hastings Public Schools, just so that everybody knows. And then secondly, and this is, I'm asking you to go another 10,000 feet up and think about it from the federal level. As we hear at the federal level, concern about the Department of Ed, concern about federal funding for public schools, how is the legislature understanding that concern? Is that a, you know, a tremendous concern or is that a minor concern?
I think it's a wait and see concern because I wish that I had a more definitive answer for you, but I'm in the same position that everybody else is in. And that is, I'm trying to learn as much as I can on a daily basis. One thing that we're definitively committed to is funding public schools to the highest degree that we are able to. Now, one reality within the budget, as you likely know, is we're now facing a $5 billion budget deficit. So we went from an $18 billion surplus and the budget was raised another $10 billion on top of that to a projected $5 billion deficit. And that is the reality that everybody has faced in these committees is that the money is functionally run out and run dry. And there's a huge amount of needs, but not any money to fulfill those needs and obligations. So I think that ties into the federal funding side because funding is critical. And again, everybody has big asks, things that they need for their schools and their districts. But we also have that reality. So it's a, it's a wait and see and do our best, yeah.
Director Brunz?
Yeah, my question is around the true appetite for, kind of related to the points you've just made, around any changes that have to do with funding. I think about advocacy work from our, our lens into your offices, requesting work in specific areas. You know, there's, there might be an attaboy for, for rooting for some of these funding priorities. But in truth, there's really, on the committee level and maybe even within legislature as a whole, there's not any appetite for funding changes. And we should focus our energy on the non-revenue priorities that we've outlined?
I think if you can find areas that you can express to the legislature that these are non-critical items. And the, if you can find areas to find savings and then shift those savings over to areas that are critical, I think that would resound for sure. But it goes back to the budget issue, unfortunately.
Any other questions? All right, so I'll just walk you through our, or, and of course, first up is the funding priorities, which we know might be difficult. But funding priorities include to fully fund or modify the unemployment insurance, paid leave programs and the Read Act mandates. Specifically, we're seeing some challenges with that unemployment insurance with folks collecting. So if, if folks don't know in the room, we now have to offer unemployment insurance for district employees who are hourly, who work only nine months out of the year, so we have to pay them unemployment for the summer. And so what we're seeing is that, one, we're having a difficult time staffing our summer school programs. And then, two, we're having folks collect unemployment and then they've found another job. So as soon as the summer is over, they effectively resign this position. So looking for help on funding with that. Another option could obviously be, you know, exempting schools from this requirement. Then we have increasing the formula allowance by 3% over the current law for 26 and 27. Reduce the cross subsidies in special education and English learner programs. Establish a district level hold harmless for compensatory funding. And then do not cut special education transportation funding. I understand that that was proposed in the governor's initial budget projections. So any questions on our, I'm sure you've heard this stuff already and are aware of it.
Yeah, if I can just comment on that quickly, really, all five of those bullet points are what I was pointing back to at the very beginning when I started talking. This is unanimous from every single school board, from every superintendent, from every principal, has had the exact same request. And it has put everybody in a very difficult position. And there have been bills that have been introduced to either, in, in many ways, try to deal with these issues and we'll see what kind of bipartisan support we can get on those.
All right, thank you. And then moving on to the non-revenue priorities, we, this, this was a resolution that we actually put together, this first one, for the delegate assembly at MSBA. And that is to amend the Minnesota Government Data Practices Act to require a person to identify themselves by full legal name and authorize school districts to assess and recover actual costs of searching and retrieving government data if the requesting individual either abandons or fails to inspect the data once it's been prepared. So personally, we've had multiple, and Kathy, I don't know if you have the numbers available, but I don't at the moment. But we have ended up spending, I believe it's like over $20,000 in, in fees, between legal fees and other fees to collect the data from a requister that wanted to remain anonymous. And then they just never showed up. So effectively, you know, somebody, the way that the law is currently written, they could effectively bankrupt a district because they could request, you know, millions of dollars worth of, of, you know, they could ask for data that goes back many years. And we have to send it through legal to be redacted and all that kind of thing. And that gets expensive, obviously, having lawyers involved. So the way that it's currently written, we'd like to see that changed. And then allow limited removal time from class with non-exclusionary discipline to enable schools to plan effective re-entry supports and interventions to ensure safe classrooms. So right now, or I believe it was, was it last year or two years ago, last year? We cannot use any non-exclusionary discipline for K through three. discipline for K through three, and we're just asking to have that ability back. The principals actually spoke to this last week, stating that it would be helpful to just have that option. Sometimes we need kind of a cooling off period for, for kids before they come back into the classroom and have a full plan prepared once they get there. Then we'd like to broaden the definition of hours of instruction to allow students to earn credit for learning wherever it occurs, eliminate the state requirement of three-day notice for remote, remote school board meeting access. This is something I'm sure you're aware of, right? Open meeting law requires that we have to post our location, and if, for example, if I were to get sick and couldn't run the meeting, I can't even join remotely if, if it's a last-minute type of a thing. So it would be great if we could eliminate that requirement for remote meeting access. And then, just in general, you know this, honor local control at the school board and district level, so.
If I can just speak to especially that second bullet point, there have already been bills introduced there also, and they have progressed out of committee, and some of them may have had their first or second reading on the floor. So those are moving forward, but it goes, again, back to what kind of bipartisanship can we expect? Some of these things, I think, are common sense things that pretty much everybody agrees on. And what would be extremely helpful is to get all of these bullet points, and then especially the non-revenue priorities. I hate to say it, it's just the truth of what we're dealing with right now, but the non-revenue priorities are things that I would be more than happy to author, champion, push through committee, and, and try to move through as quickly as possible.
Awesome, thank you.
May I comment that, that understanding your enthusiasm for authoring non-revenue priorities, I, I want to highlight that fourth one. We're on the verge of really growing a CTE program and, and looking at academies that are high school that you'd be willing to be an author of it.
I'd be more than happy to be an author on that, and you got to remember, this is my first term, so I'm trying as hard as I can to bring common sense back to the Capitol.
But that's why I took the time to, to, to say, this is a tough thing, and you're on both policy and finance committees. And, and if you say, you know, don't ask me to work magic on the finance side, I, I'm just suggesting that of those priorities and the second one, the thing that would make the biggest difference in public education in the state of Minnesota is that one. And, and, and to get away from the hours that kids sit in seats, because that has a very low correlation to how much they learn.
You're speaking my language.
Well, then, let's get her done.
Hey, I like it. Yeah.
Good.
Hold me accountable.
I will.
Have you ever heard a politician say that? It makes me uncomfortable to be called a politician, so.
Yeah.
I want to dispute just one thing you said, Director Zuzak. We would like you to work some magic on the finance also.
Yeah, pardon me, I wasn't excusing that, I was just.
I'm going to need a magic wand, if you got one of those.
All right, any other questions or comments from board members? I do have one question. I can't, I'm sorry, I can't remember if this is going through the Senate or the House or both. The bill proposing that we are mandated to have two student representatives with voting capabilities, is that in the House or no?
That is not ringing a bell, but I think we're at about 1,500 bills in the House already, so there's a chance that slipped through the cracks.
Okay, so I, if, if it does come up, I believe it must be in the Senate, right?
I think the meeting got canceled this morning.
Oh, it got canceled?
I think, I think that's what it said on the website when I left this morning.
Okay, well, I, I'd like to just give my two cents on this while we have the opportunity. So that, so like I said, the bill is that we are required to have two student school board members and that they have voting abilities. So we are talking about minors having the ability to vote on their teachers' contracts, their principals' contracts, making, you know, multimillion-dollar decisions and all this kind of stuff. I just think that this is a horrible idea. Obviously, we're all for student representatives, we have four, and love to get their reports and love to hear from them and get their opinion on things. But the voting, that needs to be, that needs to be reserved for adults in the room.
You have my assurance that is not something that I would support, and I have heard other things in committee, members say things like, the students know more than the parents and, and things of that nature, and I think that's backwards. The parents are supposed to be imbuing and imparting knowledge and wisdom to their children, and they are children when they're still minors. So that is our duty, and it is something that I would hope to protect.
Thank you. All right, any other questions, comments? Well, we have them here. All right, thank you so much for coming. We appreciate your time.
You want me to name around any longer?
No, no, no.
You can, if you'd like to have more fun. That's up to you. Totally up to you. I know you've probably had a long day, so.
Straight from the Capitol.
Yeah. All right, yeah, it is 7:58, so we're going to take a seven-minute break here, and we will come back at 8:05 PM. All right, it's actually 8:06 PM, so we will reconvene here. First up, we have our report from District 917 from Director Zuzak.
Just two quick things. You'll see the, the note that I had was actually a weekly update, it wasn't a board summary. And in that, they, they celebrate a lot of what's going on, both in the secondary program and in the, and, and in the special ed programs. The biggest news from 917 is that they are really struggling financially. We, right, because we're part of them, we're really struggling financially in the secondary program. And so you're going to hear more in our upcoming board updates about, about those struggles. Secondly, this is a really big hit for them. Lindberg, who's been there for 24 years, is leaving as the lead administrative assistant for the superintendent and the board, and she, well, I mean, imagine losing your lead administrative assistant, it's a big deal. But other than that, things are going well at 917.
Thank you. And we know what a big deal it is to lose your administrative assistant. We are familiar with that. So thank you, Wendy, for everything you do for us. Next up, we have our AMSD update from Director Burns.
All right, I've attached a few things for your reference. One is a nice version of the governor's proposed education budget, so if you want to roll through that at your leisure, there's no positions outlined in it from AMSD. It literally is just what's been outlined in the Governor's Platform for Education Spending and other policy measures. I do want to point your attention towards the PowerPoint slide that's attached, Strategic Use of AI. This was a presentation at the AMSD Board and Directors Meeting, and then you'll also see a position paper on student-centered learning. The biggest thing out of this, I would say, is that there's a lot of fear around AI, and as a recovering teacher, I can tell you that there's actually a lot of really cool work to be done with AI, and that's what this outlines, is even a teacher from St. Cloud area of schools presents his initial stance on artificial intelligence, and then that's kind of morphed over time. But Slide four is really the one that is really fun to enhance. Sorry, it might be down, I might, one more, this is the one, right here, where you look at anticipated difficulty and then the AI's capability to do it. So you start to develop this model for learners where it is like human inquiry and wonder, develop your solid hypothesis or inputs, have the AI generate that resolution, and then have human input again. So you have the HAI approach, which is the new understanding that you can approach with it. So it's really fascinating. It's cool to see people take that new approach a lot. If you go further down, you're going to get the old man shakes fist at cloud arguments about like calculators, like we were told, we'll never be able to use a calculator you carry around all the time. So even industry and trades are looking back at schools and saying things like, show folks how to use AI, because we need them to use it well to tackle mundane tasks and do those things quickly, but have the ability to think critically and navigate those systems with effectiveness and reliability. And then, a lot of what we've talked about today, on the position paper for student-centered learning, shows up in that position paper around student-centered learning, talking about decreasing, or sorry, eliminating the use of the Carnegie Credit, even the Carnegie Institute rejects that model and says it just doesn't work. Move more towards a competency-based grading model, allowing students to move at their pace, so students who are struggling get what they need to advance, but those that can whip through and show that they're meeting those grade-level standards can move on to the next thing. They find that that grows math scores on assessments by three percentage points, when you compare those that are on a competency-based grading scale versus those that are traditional. So just a lot of the conversation that we've had tonight and at previous board meetings show up in that position paper, and it's really aligned with what we've put in our legislative priorities. So it's really cool to see that show up in a number of formats.
Thank you. Any questions? All right, moving on, we have the Community Collaboration Committee update. Do you have anything for that? I'm assuming it got canceled. Obviously, we just scheduled it. I don't think you guys had met since last month.
I would say the update is what took place.
Yep.
Forty-five minutes ago.
Sounds good. All right.
We'll have to have discussion afterwards.
Next, we've got Facilities, Finance, and Joint Powers Committee with Director Zuzak.
Yeah, I think you note that there's two sets of minutes that are only a week separated. As we searched for a time, it just happened that the time that everybody could be there was only one week later. So we had two meetings really back-to-back, and so you'll see the minutes for both of those. And I, I would just describe that between us and the city of Hastings right now, the City Council representatives on that, on that group, we really have a big lift right now to, to, you know, restore it and, and strengthen the relationship and go through the documents to get them all in the same place, understanding them the same way, and, and working closely with the, with the city. And in the document on the 31st, it says that, at the end of the document, it says that it is a strong, positive relationship between the city and the, and the, and the district. And that, that was, I think, a, a really important piece. We're also looking constantly, we want to be looking, and the city wants to be looking, at opportunities to collaborate, because if we collaborate, there, we, we can increase efficiency for our increase efficiency for our for our community, for the for the, at least the the citizens of Hastings Public Schools that live within the the community of Hastings. And so we had a nice brainstorming session in addition to what I would say, two meetings of really terrific, fine-tuned, step by step, paragraph by paragraph, working through some documents. And the the notes speak for themselves. We have two meetings coming up, one's on March twenty second, and one is on April seventeenth. So those two meetings will be important for us in regard to our continued collaboration with the city. In regard to finance, I talked to Director Subert. And and the the gist of it is this, the work that's really ahead of the board in regard to finance is the work of the one point five million dollar budget reduction. And I felt strongly, I talked to Director Subert about it, and and she's okay with us really working at our work sessions more than working as a separate group on finance. And so that way, and and here's why. All of us need to vote on the budget reductions that we have coming forward. And so it didn't make sense that we'd leave anybody out. Okay, and it's the high, it's the biggest lift that we have right now, by far. And then in regard to facilities, Director Stockdale is working on a longitudinal plan, which goes, I think, as far as ten years out, at least five years out. Yeah, ten years out. And when he's ready with that, then we'll meet with him. And and that's Director Milner and Chair Tate and I. But, you know, we'll we'll meet with him and then and then the reason for us meeting with him is we'll be a sample audience and ask those provocative questions that might come up at the larger board meeting. So that that's kind of where we're at right now. And I think I I just want to echo the brilliance, Jessica, pardon me, Vice Chair Dressley, of of us pulling those three together, because they really, we tread on common ground. And I think it makes sense. So, thank you.
All right, any questions? Vice Chair Dressley?
I guess I have a question, but it's more of a operations question, like, when are we, if we're gonna be talking about this at the board, like, when are we gonna fit this in with our current schedule? Like, is there a plan to go forward?
If you don't mind, I'm gonna kick that to to Superintendent Champa and then also Director Subert. But I I think it won't be only one meeting. It will be along the way as progress occurs.
Yeah, I'll just add to that, that we right now are working on a lot of the staffing, a lot of where things potentially might be. And so we're doing some of that to bring to you. So as soon as that's in a place, I think then we'll reach out for those, that schedule.
And in as much as we can, we want to get that into work sessions.
All right, any other questions? Director Brunz?
I just want to say that I appreciate bringing that work into the work session. It allows us to not be, just to be more educated on the things that we're talking about, and I always appreciate that that piece.
Kate, any other input? I will make a comment just to speak to Director Milner's commitment. She joined us from Jamaica for one of our committee meetings, so. She was showing us her view from her balcony as we were freezing. So, all right, next, we've got our NAPAC Committee update from Director Brunz.
Yeah, a lot of what was discussed at the last NAPAC meeting has already been shared at the table. So I'll kind of walk through some things that show up on the the agenda or minutes that I took in that meeting, but we had our voluntary T N E C yesterday and kind of revolved around that idea, that thesis statement, that when native students do better, every student does better. There's an unintended consequence of building out these systems that get folks what they need in the time that they need it. So that was a really nice way of looking. We have work to do. We've made some really solid strides. But again, we have things that we need to do, and we heard those resolutions today. If you look a little bit further down, Logo Incoming with some hot merchandise for the folks on the NAPAC, some students that would be in line for that as well. And I want people to be mindful of the flag installation event that'll be this Friday at two P M. at the high school, if you can make it. Be there. It's a really powerful event. When news broke within NAPAC that that was gonna be a thing, it it was meaningful. And and tears were shed in a positive way, and it's a symbol of how far we've come in our work together. There was a really, really detailed presentation by Director Hodges that outlined and teased out that data, especially when we look at MAP. Sorry, I almost said MAP. Not around here. Fast Bridge Assessment Data, and some of the C B Ms are aligned with that and looking at our fall and winter data collection. And so you can dive in deeper if you want to see some of those trends, but I I want to shout out Director Hodges and and the depth that he went into to illustrate where we've seen growth, where those interventions have been really well targeted, but also where we are demonstrating a large need. One area, just when it comes to topics, is math. Math just hasn't had the infusion that reading has had at this time. But as I understand it, math is the next thing that's gonna go through that curricular review. So forces are incoming on that, and some resources will be there as well. And I want to shout it again. Our our liaison is is just crushing it to, Alyssa Cherry, you are amazing. Every NAPAC meeting, she brings a five-page document that outlines everything she has been doing for the last month, and it is nothing short of a major feat. It is incredible what you're doing for those folks. Appreciate you.
Thank you. Any questions, comments? All right. Next up, we've got our Student School Board Committee update with, again, Director Brunz.
Yeah, we met as a committee on February fourth, and it was great is that this time around, we have students who went to the process with us. So it was really about exploring the systems we currently had, exploring it for unintended barriers, revamping our questions to really get the students to put on paper why, how, and what, how they relate to this position. And both in the four questions that we'll have in the application, and that will go live March third and run through, I have it written down here, April fourth. From that point, we will collect those, review those applications, and have some interviews with folks. We've revamped our questions for that process, too. And so the whole time, we just kind of pivoted back to them, you know, where was the barrier? What did you need? And one of the things that they identified, but also because they have a a great resource to expand our reach, is to advertise even more so. And and they can bring their perspective into that advertisement, so it will be featured on the As Yet Untitled show. That will be a part of the Ready Set Raider class with the video production piece. So it'll be cool to see, I don't know if you saw them with their phones up before six P M., but they were filming as a component of that. So it's really nice to have them at the table and bring those perspectives with it. It's incredible. It allows us to look backwards and make improvements for the future.
So I'm curious, did they comment on, like, kind of what they do, their responsibilities, any kind of in input on anything that they would change or that they love or? Because we, I love the pictures myself. It's so fun to see, especially at Tilden, of course. But but yeah, I mean, it's all, it's all great stuff that they bring to the table.
Yeah, I don't know. I think I've got notes on it, but I don't, I don't want to dig to find, I think, conversations that we have focus on, how do we get more of the larger student input back to the board? So you can serve in that liaison position, because that's a logistical feat, and then making sure that it works for them. And being able to onboard folks in a way where we truly understand what they're going to be doing, and they can be a part of that process, too, to give it a student lens.
Okay, yes.
So I have a question that kind of hit me the other day. The two, our two juniors that are on the representatives now, are they gonna be automatically into our senior positions if they're wanting to? Or is there four positions, something logistical that I didn't really think about before?
As written, they would have to go back into the candidate pool.
Do they get any preference?
So we have the application process and then the interview. The interview is an interview guide that rates your answers on a scale of four. So we do try and tease out bias, because there would be a a natural bias towards folks that we are already familiar with. So it allows us to even remove the name and just look at the score.
Okay, sounds good. Thank you. Any other? Yep, go ahead.
So I I just have to mention, because we're not gonna meet again before this goes live, that there's scholarship opportunities that are available to them as seniors that were not available to them as juniors. So I, yeah, I think that that might be something we want to reconsider. Just because we want them to have them scholarship opportunities, and if they're not, they've served as a junior, and then they're not allowed to serve as a senior, because they didn't.
Clarified for our juniors earlier. A little bit different, so.
And maybe just as a clarifying point, have mentors push that information out to our current board members?
I did send it to the both the seniors, the applications and everything. Yeah. Because I'm your mentor.
All right, good. All right, anything else on that? All right, and next, on to the lengthy Policy Committee update. Lots of policies on the agenda tonight.
Okay, so I decided I'm gonna start this by explaining what we do in the Policy Committee and how we go about reviewing policies. We have a three-year policy review cycle that started back in January of, January first of twenty twenty-three. The district currently has one hundred and forty policies, procedures, and forms. We review roughly twelve to fifteen of them each quarter. So forty-six policies a year plus thirteen annual review policies. These go in order of series. There's nine series going from series one hundred to series nine hundred. So we're, we do have an order and a format, and it's documented. I just wanted everybody to know, because a lot of the emails I got this past week had a lot to do with just pulling this policy out of nowhere, and that didn't, or pulling policy one hundred out of nowhere, and that just wasn't the case. So we have a process that's documented in our handbook. We have a format that we use to review these policies. So I just wanted to be clear about how that all happens. We've, we have met three times the Policy Committee. January thirty first, February seventh, and February twenty first. Out of those meetings, we have, we're just gonna go ahead and start with policy one hundred, so that we can. That's for first reading for sunset. The way that we did, we had reviewed the one hundred series policies, all of them. And when looking at this policy, there was no legal, no legal references, no M S B A model policy, so it made it very difficult to review this policy. And then beyond that, the conversation was that we would take this, we would sunset it and put the strategic plan in its place. That was the goal, to support all students. I I'm sure people have things they want to say about it.
Sure, I'll I'll speak. So first of all, I'd like a raise of hands at this table. How many of us are fully committed to supporting each and every student in our district? Okay, so that is all of us. And it's very unfortunate to me that when we're talking about sunsetting this and replacing it with our strategic plan, that folks made the assumption that somehow we're not here to support all students. That is simply not true. And I guess one thing that I've learned in this day and age is that a lot of folks look for the worst possible idea, I guess, worst possible, most conflicting, most divisive reason for something happening, and they kind of latch on to that and go with it. And I just want to reassure folks that that is absolutely not what is happening. Some, some history on this, I did go through, and I, if there's, there's a lengthy discussion on when this was created back in February of twenty twenty-one. And in watching that, there was actually several board members who expressed concern with implementing this policy because because it is, because of the language, number one, because it doesn't read like a policy, it reads like a mission statement. And I think in the Policy Committee, I actually, or of different diverse backgrounds and whatnot, we have to eliminate those programs. So when you're looking at economic status, he specifically mentioned, like, show choir, for example. He's like, show choir is an extremely expensive thing for kids to be involved in. So are we saying that if we can't make that affordable for every kid, we have to nix it, you know, kind of a thing? And it's like, yeah, that, right, that that makes sense. He also mentioned the international trips, and that's come up with this board as well. That, and that's actually one of the things that's on the on the agenda tonight, that we want to make sure that we are offering lower cost overnight trips for students to have at least one of those opportunities in their high school time. Because truly, I mean, we we talked about it before, you know, we're we're heading to Argentina, Greece. I think France was one of them. And those are, you know, thousands of dollars. And yes, there are fundraising opportunities available, but ultimately most kids aren't gonna be able to raise more than a few hundred dollars through what is offered through fundraising. So when you really are talking about equitable opportunities, it's it's tough to say anything that's not a hundred percent equitable, we're gonna have to look at eliminating. So that that's a tough sell for me, one. And it also talks about students' abilities. And and it's like, well, when you think about sports, right, I mean, we know that all kids have different abilities, and saying that we have to have, you know, for example, I'm gonna say, you know, we've got varsity hockey, and we've got J V and all this kind of stuff. And if you're saying that all kids have to be able to compete in varsity hockey, that's a big stretch. I can't skate myself. I wouldn't want you to put me anywhere near the ice, frankly. So that's, that's something, just to, just to consider in that, in that verbiage. Something that I did speak to last week, I said, I just mentioned, you know, the words diversity, equity, and inclusion unfortunately have become incredibly political and divisive in our current world. And so I'm gonna guess, right, about half of our constituents are fully in support of this policy and probably about half aren't. And the struggle that I have with, one thing that this board is really trying to do is to be unified. And if we know we have a policy that isn't accepted by the overwhelming majority, we need to do something about it, right? And the the basis for this policy is that we truly do support each and every student, each and every staff member. And that that commitment from this board is completely unwavering. And so that's why my recommendation was to go to our strategic plan. Because our strategic plan is 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 the guiding document for our district. To give a little bit more history, this policy was developed before there was a strategic plan in place. So it, and it was discussed in that February meeting that this is going to be our foundational document for the district. And it was gonna help develop that strategic plan. And so now that we have a strategic, we currently have a strategic plan, we are working on revamping it. I'm gonna say it's it's a solid plan, but it's not a hundred percent. Right? It's not quite there yet. I said, we had hoped to be farther along in that development by this point, and we just, you know, things got canceled, and things have changed a bit, unfortunately. But in that strategic plan, we have, in the current strategic plan, it was, as was shown earlier, we have the three anchors, which are engaged learners, effective operations, and communication and collaboration. And in the new plan, we have, instead of the act, or instead of the engaged learners, we have academic excellence and equity. We have added staff support and retention, and we've added safe and respectful learning environments. And I believe that these, these items that we are adding in cover the intent of the the diversity and equity policy. And the strategic plan is the basis for our superintendent's performance goals. And then she cascades those down to her staff, which are cascaded down further as well. So this being the absolute guiding document has a far more reaching impact than what a standalone policy has. Because it truly is the guiding document for our district and where we want to go as a whole, and make sure that everybody is lockstep in line with going towards this path. So the other thing, I don't, I don't feel like I should have to do this, but I feel like we were, we are a bit under attack with the assumption that we don't accept people who are diverse, we don't, we don't appreciate diversity, all this kind of stuff. And I I feel like, one, I'd like to let folks know, I went to school and got a degree in international manager, international business management. A good chunk of my career was spent managing twenty international warehouses. I worked with people from all over the world every day. Different cultures, different countries, never had an issue. A lot of my school was dedicated to learning to appreciate other cultures and respect those cultures and work with those people. And I feel I've done very well in my career with this. The other thing that's been suggested is that somehow we're going to reduce programming, especially with special ed. If folks don't know, I have a daughter who was born with a permanent disability. And if if anyone is going to try to tell me, I And if, if anyone is going to try to tell me I don't understand how difficult these kids have it on a daily basis, I will argue with you to the end. So knowing how difficult their special needs kids' lives are as it is, I would never think about making their lives more difficult by removing programming, removing resources for them. And then I have to go off of, I myself and the folks who've been in the room with me with strengths training, I am a very analytical person. I make decisions based on facts, based on data. I, I struggle actually to relate to folks who make decisions based purely on emotion. So I do look at that side of it, right, with, with, with a lot of input. And the fact that there is no MSBA model for this. If we have this standalone policy out here that does have, it could have legal implications to it. There's no trigger to us, well, I'll back up a little bit. If there's a change in the law and there's a model policy from MSBA, they send us the notification that, hey, this policy needs to be updated because the law has changed. So that's our signal. It's like, okay, hey, we'll get on it. Vice Chair Dresley does an excellent job of keeping on top of all of these updates to make sure that we know that we stay in lockstep with current law. All six of us have taken an oath that we will uphold state and federal law. And it is our job to make sure that this district does not get sued and that we don't do anything that would ever be considered illegal. So we are all dedicated to that. So not having that MSBA model, not having that trigger for when laws change to know what verbiage we need to update in a, in a policy like this, it, it creates issues and it could potentially create a legal issue. So that's one of my, my concerns because there are no legal cross-references within this policy. I did look it up. I actually, I went through every policy that we have in this district today. So there were 110 other policies. And we have five other policies in total that don't currently have any legal references. And one is our student school board representative policy, which understandably, we never had them before. We needed to create a policy to figure out what we do, you know, how we operate with student school board members. One is our employee recognition program, and that's just simply giving guidance as far as what we can allow for, allow for employee recognition. The third one is the grading policy, excuse me, that offers, that offers guidance on how, how we do our grading in this district. One is naming facilities. That came up a couple of years ago because we were looking at naming, I think, the pool area or something. And we decided, you know, I don't think, I think we want to have some kind of structure in place. And the board ultimately decided we don't want to name things after people anymore going forward. So that one is there. And then policy, and then one more policy is the memorials and memorial activities for students and staff. And that came up because of a district need and there is an MSBA model policy for that. So, so the intent was to move towards the strategic plan, which again is the guiding document for the entire district. And there, and the intent with that is going to actually have measurable goals and metrics tied to it so that we can actually measure our progress towards how we're doing with accomplishing what we're setting out to do, which is supporting every single student in this district. Sorry, I'm just looking through my notes here.
And it is backed by a statute. There's statutory requirements that we have a long-term strategic plan. So there will be, there's legal references for the strategic plan being added as that policy.
So I think, I think that's all that I have in my notes. Like I said, I think, I think that we've got a tremendous start on our refresh of our strategic plan. Last week I had suggested, you know, if folks aren't comfortable with replacing policy 100 just yet, we can wait and replace it when, or we can wait and, and vote on the sunsetting when the strategic plan is actually ready so that we know what that roadmap completely looks like. I would be comfortable replacing it with our current strategic plan. Like I said, I think it's a very solid document. It's just not, I think, where we ultimately want to be at this point. Because it, it does include more language, especially around that, the safety piece of it, the safe and respectful learning environment, that, that is your inclusion language right there, right? That's what we want to make sure that we are elevating every student that we're providing a safe place for them to learn and, and do well. So, and then equity is on there, as I mentioned. So I, I truly believe in my heart that this, this document is the solution for what we were trying to get at with this policy and it is more robust and will be tied to performance metrics, performance goals. And we will be tracking against this on a regular basis. So I know I've said a lot, but I have a lot of thoughts on this and I, I just think it's the better, the better route to go with it, with this. So. Other folks. Director Zuzik.
I feel very strongly that we shouldn't sunset, and sunset isn't an appropriate term. What we're really doing is, is canceling or rescinding the policy. Sunsetting is something different. Sunsetting is when something is completely fixed and it's all gone by, then you don't renew the policy because it no longer has any effect. And clearly we understand that we still have achievement gaps. Clearly we understand that there's still problems. And so I, I just, I completely disagree with the idea that what's in the policy is all soft language and it doesn't, it, it doesn't direct anything. In fact, there's specific things that it directs the district to do, including the board, and we haven't done them. And that doesn't mean that it's not important. I, I just, I, I think that it's ill-suited. And to be clear, we've had dozens of communications from the community. And I've summarized them on several pages of paper and I, I might be fruitful to, 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 to review those comments. This is a bigger deal than what, so this is from my heart to yours. This is a bigger deal than what some of you think. This diversity and equity policy matters greatly to many people. And it matters because their kids are reserving special services and the, the belief that does this mean that we won't spend resources inequitably or equitably? We, we're, we're going to, we're going to, you know, every, every kid gets the same dollar amount for their education. That's absurd. Every kid has different needs. And so we have to do it equitably. And that's what the policy says we're going to do. We're going to spend our resources equitably. This is the only policy in our entire policy manual that proactively addresses equity and diversity. There is no other policy. All of the other ones are reactive, meaning if somebody gets bullied, if somebody is treated fair unfairly in a, in an employment situation, then the policy kicks in. That's reactive. This is the only policy that says what we're going to do proactively to make sure that equity and, and inclusion and diversity happen. And, and we have to keep our ears open. We have to read. And again, I, I, I'm not going to do it, but I'm tempted to read just a quick, I've, I've, I limited myself to 30 words per person that, that, that wrote a comment and I'm up to 14 pages. This is, we have been besieged by our community. Do not get rid of this, this policy. This is very important. This matters to me. This matters to my grandson. This matters to my family. This matters to my children. I, I, and you know, we, we have said that we really want to improve our enrollment. Well, you know what? Our enrollment isn't going to improve if we get rid of the only policy that says we care about people that are diverse. If, 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 if we, so this is a statement that I said literally thousands of times during my educational leadership career. In order for us to teach all children, we have to reach each child. And it's as easy as Kaylee Schumacher said it is. Because Kaylee Schumacher said, this is not a big deal. Providing equity in a classroom, providing innovation, providing the supports the kids need is not challenging, but it is a way of life. It is a way of doing, it is a way of doing business and education. And Kaylee was right on. This doesn't take more money. This is, this is the work that we were all charged to do. If you want to improve enrollments, then we need to be a welcoming community. And I just, during the meeting tonight, Kaylee Schumacher's thing rang so true for me. The, the conversation from TNEC rang so true to me. The, the, the kids, the, pardon me, our student board members talking about what's happening at different sites. You know, we, we wouldn't even have the preschool program if it wasn't for equity. And, and we got more seats this year in our volunteer, volunteer preschool program. And that's equity. That's what equity can do. For us to think about this in a way that it's separate from the strategic plan but included in the strategic plan, I, I just think that this document is so important, we should hold it on its own, side by side with the strategic plan. And, and I, I will, and I mentioned before and I'll say again, I don't care what number the policy is. So if the strategic plan becomes, you know, policy 100 and the equity diversity plan or policy becomes 105 or 106, whatever number's available, I have not any stake in that game. And it was also absurd to hear that you can't have any policy if there, if there's no statute or regulations or laws that, that you can reference it to. That's absurd. To your point, Chair Tate, there's five that we have that don't have any references. That, that's just not even accurate. So I, I, I want to, I don't mean to put you on the spot, Superintendent Champa, but I really, you know, you and I have swum in some of the same pools as school leaders in lots of different schools. And I wonder, I wonder what you think, feel, and believe about this because frankly, I really respect your opinion.
Well, you know, you said what your statement is and mine, everyone's heard it in here, is each and every, right? And I have worked my entire career to meet the needs of each and every, whether that was in the classroom, whether it was as a principal and now as a superintendent. We are here for each and every student. We've heard your passionate review. So now I just want to add the legal also to this. And this was included in a clarification to the board, but it was very late today. So I apologize with that. So I just wanting to get a legal perspective also because we've talked a lot about emotion surrounding this. And really, we spoke and it was Director Moen and I, earlier today, we spoke with Greg Madsen at Kennedy and Graven. And here's a couple of takeaways that I just want to share. One is the Dear Colleague letter is not a directive or an order. And so that was the February 14th letter. There was a follow-up just yesterday. The Commissioner of Education published a clarification document for Minnesota schools, released 224. And the district's declaration of equity is not in any way a violation of law. There was one question was asked about in 2D, the district has committed to the recruitment and retention of highly diverse, qualified diverse staff. And really the follow-up to that is it's not a violation of the law to encourage and recruit. However, the selected candidate would be the most qualified. In conclusion, Legal Counsel Greg Madsen suggested that additional time and thought be given to allow for clarity across the state because it is a time that there is just so many things coming and, and interpretation of what that might be. So that's the legal guidance.
Do you have a, beyond your, your professional statement, do you have a gut check on this one?
Thank you for continuing to ask me questions. No, I'm, I'm teasing. I, I think, I think I said earlier that this is a policy that I know that you spoke very clearly about that it is a on a cycle and it just came up as a cycle right now. I think that now is, it, it wouldn't be the time that I would be looking at it, but I'm not making the decisions.
I, I guess one, one thing I just wanted to say in response to Director Zuzik, the emails that we got, to me, indicated that folks were unaware that this was going to be replaced with something else that I feel is, is better and more robust. But just want to make that clear. Yes, people said they don't want this to go away. They don't want that, but the, but it didn't seem to me that that was a clear understanding, at least through my reading of all of the emails that we got. So I wonder if folks would feel differently knowing that, you know, this, this is, this is what we're going to instead of just getting rid of it and wiping it off the books and wiping the intent off the books because that, that was not the plan.
And today, today, what assurance do they have that the spirit of equity and diversity is appropriately covered in what we're moving to?
And that was the suggestion that I had made, that we hold off on, on getting rid of this until our strategic plan is ready. And we are confident that what it contains is, is what, is where we want to be as a district.
And can I just say something? Procedurally, we don't sunset, or we don't get rid of a policy in one reading. It has to go through two readings. We voted on that in January.
Director Biermeyer?
How long? You know, we're decision makers here. And I'm not, I don't want to stall the train out here. And I'm not, I'm not anti anything. I am pro kid. I am pro everybody. But the danger we get is kicking this down for a couple more months. And then the issue isn't rectified. I, I think it's important that we vote on this at the next cycle. And that's my opinion. And I know I'm going to take some heat for it. That's okay. I've got worse things to worry about. Decisions need to be made. We're a board. And we could have a discussion. And I'm willing to talk to anybody. I'm not a keyboard warrior, but if somebody wants to call me, that's fine. But I think we need to make a decision by the next meeting. And that's, that's the only thing I'm concerned about is I'm not for, okay, let's look at this in six months. Because in six months, we got path, we will get things that we're still trying to move. And I want those moving because that's, that's achievement. Okay, that's student achievement. So we've done a great job of spinning the wheel and making decisions. I'm, I don't want to get stuck in the mud with a tire turning. And I know it sounds like a weird analogy, but this is where this can lead to. Stagnation? We're going to make a decision, I hope, at the next meeting. That's, I got, you know, I had, a lot of my questions were answered today by everybody that participated. Some of my, yeah, I'm worried financially. You know? Come on. And to tell me we shouldn't worry financially is a ridiculous argument. Because we're already at a 1.5 shortfall or adjustment. I just think, and whatever decision we make, I believe it needs to be made at the next board meeting. You know, I'm going to be, if that's not the way it happens, that's, so be it. But I think we've, we have failed everything that Dr. Champa has moved forward here and, and kept moving forward here with some delays in some certain areas, pathways. It's time to make a decision again. We, I said this a couple of months ago. I can't remember what it was about, but you know what? We are elected to make decisions. And I'm, I'm not looking at this as a five or six month window here. And I'm, I'm not looking at this as a five or six month window here, because that is not a positive outcome for anybody to live with this another five or six months. And, and, you know, I've been called, okay? I've been on the receiving end, all right? And it's wrong. I like kids. I love kids. I ran for this board, my kids aren't even on, in school anymore. There was no agenda for me. But I was told many times, there is. There isn't. We need to make a decision. And I think we need to make it by the next meeting.
The timing isn't important to me, the making the right decision's important to me. And I, I would just offer this as a sleep question, meaning before you go to bed and as you're going to bed, I think the right question to think about is, if we retain policy 100 and we adjust it to make it meet our current standard of the way that policies are organized, who gets hurt? Because if we get rid of it, real or imagined, there's a lot of people that feel-
To me, because I don't see people as a part of a bucket, as a part of a group, people, every single person is unique and individual, excuse me. We need to be able to hear our meeting. Every single person offers unique skills, unique talents, and, and yes, has unique challenges as well. And I, I have a really hard time playing identity politics with kids especially, because when you say we respect, we value diversity, and here are the 17 buckets that define diversity, what about the kids that don't fall into one or more of those 17 buckets? How does that make them feel? And that's, that's the real problem that I have with, with how this policy is laid out, because it, it is not, it is putting, for some reason, it's, it's saying that if you fall into one or more of these 17 buckets, you're somehow more important, more, more diverse, more, you know, more. And it's like, no, we need to show that we are, we are valuing every single kid for what they bring to the table, and we are there to help all of them in whatever, however they need to be helped, to get the absolute best experience in our schools that they need. Okay, I, I am not going to ask again. If you need to have a conversation, please step outside or to the back of the room, because we can hear you up here and it is very distracting. Okay? All right. Any other input on policy 100? As, as we've stated, we are not voting on this tonight.
I'm just gonna play a little devil's advocate, because you say that families will not feel welcome coming to this school without a diversity and equity policy. And to me, the strategic plan, if they're going on a school website and they're looking to see what does this district stand for, that is the first thing they're gonna see. So I don't know that they're gonna dig for policy 100, or if we change it to 102 or 104 or whatever. They're gonna see that strategic plan. And I believe, I mean, what I've seen so far and what she's got going, it's amazing. It's welcoming. It's inclusive. It's, it welcomes diversity. It's all of the things that we're fighting about. And the people that I had personal conversations with this week, I, first of all, I appreciate that way more than the emails, because the emails are making massive assumptions about us, which I also don't appreciate, because most everybody who made massive assumptions about us have never met us. it's interesting that we meet in a middle school, because I kind of consider that middle school behavior. Let's not call names, let's not group people into categories that you don't know they belong in. But that's beside the point. In talking with people personally this week, I did say that, you know, I kind of feel like we got the cart ahead of the horse. I appreciate knowing that this policy 100, it was just automatically up for renewal. I, because I'm not on policy committee, I didn't have that understanding fully until tonight. And so in my talking with people personally, I was like, I don't know why we just didn't wait to look at policy 100 until we got the strategic plan done. Then everyone in the community would have the trust in us that we are covering each and every student. Each and every student, each and every group, if that makes you feel better. Each and every is covered. But I didn't understand that that policy 100 was automatically on the schedule. Now, would we have loved to have had the strategic plan done? Absolutely. But we had a series of circumstances that pushed that out, and so we are delayed on that. So I did have someone ask me, well, why don't you just table, table policy 100 and its discussions until you get the strategic plan done? And one thing that hasn't really been brought up at the table that definitely is a concern of mine, is President Trump's talking about, if you have diversity, equity and inclusion in your school, we're gonna take away federal funding. And someone asked me, are you fearful of that? Darn right I am. That's a lot of money for this district. And I can guarantee everybody in this room is gonna be way more mad at us if we have to cut programs and cut teachers and cut salaries and cut people. So yes, he's like a bull in a china closet right now. He is massively doing stuff throughout the United States. Am I nervous that he's gonna come into a district and say, you know what, you got this policy and I'm gonna cut your federal funding? I am nervous about that. I don't want to be the one that has to do that. I said last week, and I tried, my words were misinterpreted, I tried to praise the district and say, because of our school perceptions survey and because of the cadence review we get, we are seeing very positive changes in this district. And I got told that, no, we're not, and that I'm not in touch with what's happening. And I said, well, okay, then if other things are occurring, that needs to be brought to the right people, because we're seeing positive change. We are getting positive reports. We are seeing percentage changes on those school perception reviews that things are getting better in this district. And I tried to give a little praise last week and it went the wrong direction. But I'm really excited about that and proud of that, because we know who's working hard to make that happen. And instead, we just kind of got crushed under these emails this week. All of us on this board are for all students, and I don't know where the accusations come from that we're not. All of us want to see every student in this district succeed and thrive and be the very best they can be, and staff. Let's not forget that, and staff. We want to support and retain great people in our district, of course. So where all these accusations came from is out of this world unbelievable. But yeah, I just think, common sense wise, if someone is actually moving to this community, trying to see if this is where they want to come, well, and to boot, I'll back up to our experience coming back, coming into this town. When we considered moving here 27 years ago, man, everybody told us, you're gonna love raising your kids in this community. This top-notch school is here, this is best of the best, you are gonna be so happy you moved here. I tell you what, I put a heck of a lot more weight on someone's personally telling me what a great school system this is than any document. So word of mouth, if we are doing better, if we are improving, let that speak for itself, for one thing. Let's stop all this bickering over words and unite and work together for the betterment of our students. And whether it's pausing this and tackling it when the strategic plan is fully done, so everybody trusts that the verbiage is in there, that everybody's covered, like we're saying it's going to, that's fine, if we need to. And I'm sorry, Director Biermeyer. But if we need to do that to help people feel safe and quell their fears, I don't think that's gonna be that long of a process, not five or six months, I'm guessing, correct? I mean, we can do that, but the intent was never to leave students behind or cut a program or get rid of things for the students we are currently serving. Never, never, never. And I don't know where that thought process came from. So it was some good conversations with people in person this week, I will say that. And I appreciate those in-person conversations and being able to be adults and talk face to face and share our viewpoints. Because the reality is, each and every one of us was raised differently, different environments, different experiences, different everything. And so we come from different backgrounds ourselves and have different gifts to bring to the table.
Thank you. Director Burns?
I think as people consider this, I would walk through the process we went through earlier today. When you think about the good work of NAIPAC and, and Chair Humphrey from NAIPAC sharing that concurrence piece, and then bringing those resolutions forward to us, these are the things that we need the district to do or provide to meet the needs of our students, the unique needs of our students. That's a direct advocacy from a group, but it only exists because of statute. When I look at this list of 17 other protected classes, that's not a thing. So we have that vessel that exists, we get that, we agree to what we commit to and we deliver it, and that's equity, that's giving folks what they need in the moment that they need it. These folks don't get that, not in that same fashion. It charges us with having that perspective when we look at resource allocation from our perspective and then having that trickle down. So that's the framework I would have everyone take into it, because we need to be the people and this needs to be that reminder. And I think removing this policy sends more of a ripple through the community of the people that are already here, and they will jump to 196 or South Wash. That is the movement I would be cautious of. And eliminating this and then moving something else and then have to explain that, you're just, again, explaining your resume, it means you've already lost, you're never gonna get those people back. That isn't, that is not an argument that anyone is having. They're just, that argument's for yourself. That's not for an audience that's gonna be receptive to that. But it does charge us with this work and it can live and coincide with that, because what I do think this does is it raises the floor for what we charge ourselves with delivering for folks. I think with it gone, it, it lowers that floor. And a policy like this exists beyond Dr. Champa, beyond this current board. And that way, it perpetuates, and we know that it's gonna deliver for folks across our community in all these different categories into perpetuity.
Everything we're doing right now, Director Burns, is for eternity also, right? We're moving forward for forever here. I mean, changes are made, adjustments are made, but we're not, I'm not here to, to move the ball and, and I'm, I'm not in some smoke-filled room to want to hijack kids. We're here to build this and keep this going. I can live with a decision. I can't live with no decision. I may have to, but that doesn't mean I have to.
So I would just say, like, say from an operational standpoint, we have this documented, so we will, like, we will have the vote on it unless there's consensus here today that we won't have the vote on it next week.
Next month.
Next month, sorry. Yeah, sorry.
All right. And, and, and next, I mean, and here's the thing, right? We, if, if we want to move forward with putting it on the agenda, we certainly can. And I think it gives us the opportunity to have additional conversations and interactions with our constituents. And at that time, we can certainly vote to postpone the vote until a future month as well. So I think it gives us a month to think about it, to gather input, and we can go from there, right? Because like, again, I, based on the emails that we got, I'm guessing 90-plus percent of those emails, those people did not understand that, what the intent was. They thought we were just, just getting rid of it, you know, out of the blue type of a thing too. And there would be no replacement, there would, and it was just because, whatever reason, we felt like taking this on right now. But
Can I make just one comment?
So Director Biermeyer, I just want to clarify that I think you know I'm not about kicking anything down the road. And I do appreciate decisions so that we can move forward. I do think the timing of this, so I would hate to see an action because of uncertainty or fear or whatever that might be, and just a lot of clarity around it, is what I was suggesting, not that it's delayed for any other reason than that. Because as you mentioned, some of the positive change, this doesn't allow us to do the positive things for kids, and we're all here to do what's right for kids. So I just ask that you continue to talk to your constituents and so that we can make a, you can make a really good decision, so we can get back to the work of doing the right thing for kids.
Vice Director, or Director Biermeyer?
Amen to that. And whatever we decide, like I said, I, I'm one vote. So I know how I'm voting. I'm voting to vote on this at the next meeting. And maybe we should put it up for a vote?
Well, with that, we could take a motion on how we want to proceed.
I make the motion that we vote on this next month, on, on whether or not we sunset policy 100 or whether or not we do not sunset policy 100. I say we make a decision next month. That's my motion.
So there's a motion on the table. And again, we can always make a motion at that time to postpone the vote, if, if that's where we feel we need to be. So, okay, looking for a second on the voting on it next month.
Biermeyer, seconds.
All right. Any discussion? All right. All those in favor of putting it on the agenda for next month to vote on, say aye. Aye. All those opposed, say nay. All right. Motion passes four to two. It will be on the agenda next month. But again, we can vote to postpone at that time. It gives us obviously a month to contemplate and, and talk to people. So, all right. Thank you for a robust discussion, everyone.
So now I want to move into our other first readings. Policy 100, legal status of the school district. This is a new ISD 200 policy, but it is, we're just, we're recommending that we adopt MSBA model policy. I'm just gonna go through these rather quickly unless somebody says they got a question. That's, okay. 102, equal education opportunities. This policy, we just made a couple of adjustments to, and it was based on MSBA model policy. The one thing that we did change is throughout the policy, it said school district policy on, and then it stated the, the policy number. We updated it, so now it says ISD 200 policy number and then their title. So it's actually reflecting what our policy number and name is for those policies. Policy 103, complaints, students, employees, parents, others, and others, I think, and others. So the title is updated to reflect that, and this is also aligned with MSBA model policy. There was just one or two small alignments in sections, 2A added language to align with the model policy, and then we added all of section 2C. Any questions on any of those? Well, we will have another 100 series of policy coming forward next month, and that will be the official name of the school, or the official name of the school district. It just wasn't ready yet this month. Policy 515, protect, protection and privacy of pupil records. This, there was a lot of adjustments done, but it was in order to illustrate what we do as a district and not what the statute or federal language is. We're, we want to stay in there what we did, so that's what those recommendations are. And it's actually laid out what was changed based on revisions to align with model policy and what was changed to be district-specific revisions. So it's in the summary. Policy 515, or 515.1 directory information opt-out form and 515.2 form consent to release private data were created by administration. I'm looking at Lyndy. Thank you. Thank you. But there, those we're recommending not for first reading, but for consent agenda adoption tonight, because they're administrative forms, so they just go through in one, one meeting here. Policy 519, interviewing of students by outside agencies. This one is being recommended for individual action tonight, but it is a first reading. This one, we looked at it to make sure that it, to make sure that it aligned with the model policy and with statutes, and it does, except for this one section, section 3A, we aligned it with the MSBA model policy language, but it wasn't substantial changes to that either, so that's why we're recommending that it's adopted in one meeting. Does anybody have any questions about that? Did you want me to speak? Is there anything else you want that I? Okay. And then, policy 904, distribution of materials on school district property by non-school persons. That is a new model, or a new ISD 200 policy, but it is the model policy that we're recommending adoption of with the modifications that are listed on the summary document. Then there are no changes to the second readings. Third readings, policy 610, field trips. There was, in addition to section 2C, all of 2 is newly added language, that's documented here in the summary and on the redline version of the policy online. So we are recommending that, that this does not move ahead for adoption, because there's still a couple more things that probably need to be adjusted on it before it goes through for, or comes to the board for adoption, but we wanted to, you know, that we're working towards that, and that's why it's on there for third reading tonight. Annual review policies, I'm not gonna go through every single one of these, but these ones are mandated, or mandated either by law or by our policy language, that we review them manually, and so these are all revised to align with MSBA model policy, and no other revisions have been made to these annual review policies. Any questions?
The one about field trips, is that, do, do you think it's likely that it comes forward next month? So it's, it's just a matter of, like, the, the time that it took to prepare the document, that it's not gonna be the final reading, on a third reading? Thank you.
Yeah, because we made one significant change at the meeting that you missed, so we wanted to make sure that we didn't just kind of sneak that through, and, so, yep.
We have four policies that will be adopted through the consent agenda tonight. They've, this is their third readings, policy 534, unpaid meal charges, 614, school district testing plan and procedures, 615, testing accommodations, modifications, and exemptions for IEP's section 504's plans and LEP students. And then 721, uniform grant guidance policy regarding federal revenue sources. There were no changes. In addition, they haven't been changed since first reading, so I just wanted to make sure.
All right, any questions on that lengthy, lengthy list of policies? About 250 pages worth of our agenda. All right, moving on, I am looking for a motion on the consent agenda, please.
I motion to approve the consent agenda.
Milner second.
Any discussion? All right, seeing none, all those in favor of approving the consent agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, say nay. Motion passes unanimously to approve the consent agenda. Onto items for individual action. First, we have policy 519.
I make the motion to adopt policy 519.
Milner second.
All right, discussion? All right, all those in favor of, of approving policy 519, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. Motion passes unanimously to approve policy 519. Next on our list, we have updating the agenda creation process. We discussed this at our work session last week. To date, with this board, it's been myself and Superintendent Champa setting the agenda, and I, and I have requested that Vice Chair Dressley be added into that, or I should say, whoever is the vice chair be added into that process. It is very helpful to have that person there, to have full knowledge of what's going on, especially with, as I mentioned last week, our open meeting law requirement, where if I were to get sick the day of the board meeting, she is fully up to speed on what is on the agenda and why, and all of that. So with that, well, go ahead.
I'll make a motion to approve, I think that's a brilliant idea.
Looking for a second?
Burns will second.
All right, any discussion? All right, all those in favor of changing the process to include the vice chair to develop agendas, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. Motion passes unanimously. All right, next we have a resolution, oh, go ahead.
Can I just ask clarifying questions? So that will be updated in our handbook, but since we voted on it, it, it will just be updated in the handbook.
Thank you.
Sounds good, thank you for doing that. Next, we have a resolution declaring a board vacancy. Looking for a, an motion on this.
Zuzik makes a motion to declare the board vacancy.
Do you wanna waive the reading?
And waive the reading.
Thank you. Can I get a second, please?
Second, Dressley.
All right, any discussion? All those in favor of approving the, oh, sorry, yeah, you're right. Thank you for the reminder, we need to do a roll call vote on resolutions. Clerk Milner, please take a roll call vote.
Director Biermeyer? Director Zuzik?
Aye.
Vice Chair Dressley?
Aye.
Chair Tate?
Aye.
Oh, Director Burns?
Aye.
Director Milner, aye.
Thank you. Motion passes unanimously. Next, we have another resolution to reduce committed technology funds. Could I get, get a motion on this item?
Brunson make a motion to approve the resolution as written and waive the reading.
Biermeyer seconds.
Thank you. Any discussion? All right, roll call vote, please.
Director Biermeyer? Director Zuzik?
Aye.
Chair Tate, or, sorry. Vice Chair Dressley?
Aye.
I skipped over ya. Chair Tate?
Aye.
Director Burns?
Aye.
Director Milner, aye.
All right, three more resolutions to go. Got a resolution for the assignment of funds to elementary STEAM programming. Can I get a motion on this item?
Zuzik recommends moving the, the funds as described herein and waive the reading.
Milner second.
Thank you. Any discussion? I would just like to say that I am excited about this STEAM programming. This is coming about, this is obviously for the elementary schools, and enhancing what we have for their specials ultimately, and this is modeled after Enver Gorbachev Heights, correct? So there's been a group kind of involved with, with them to, to learn best practice and move this forward to better the experience for elementary students. All right, any other discussion? All right, roll call vote, please.
Director Biermeyer?
Aye.
Director Zuzik?
Aye.
Vice Chair Dressley?
Aye.
Chair Tate?
Aye.
Director Burns?
Aye.
Director Milner, aye.
Thanks again. Next, we have a resolution directing the administration to make recommendations regarding the reduction and/or discontinuance of programs and positions and reasons therefore.
I'd like to add a little bit of context to this, and then I'll make a recommendation. First, in many districts, every single year, they make this resolution, even if they're not planning on cuts, because it allows the, the business office, the finance office, to make reductions as needed. We haven't done this for a couple years in Hastings, and obviously, this year, it's, it's critical for us. We're looking at about $1.5 million reduction in our operating budget, and that, as I mentioned earlier, is gonna be a heavy lift, but I, I do make the, the recommendation that we approve this resolution to direct the administration to make recommendations regarding the reduction and, and discontinuance of programs and positions for reasons therefore, so.
And waive the reading.
Second, Dressley. Sorry to influence your motion. Any discussion? All right, roll call vote, please.
Director Biermeyer?
Aye.
Director Zuzik?
Aye.
Vice Chair Dressley?
Aye.
Chair Tate?
Aye.
Director Burns?
Aye.
Director Milner, aye.
All right, motion passes unanimously. And finally, we have the last resolution on our agenda, to enter into guaranteed energy weight. Whoops, this was removed, I'm sorry. I didn't refresh, or what, this is no longer on here, so guys, we're done. It's exciting. Next, we've got our future meetings coming up, so folks are aware. We have a policy meeting on March 7th at noon in the district office. On March 12th, we have a very short, as was alluded to earlier tonight, a short work session at 6:00 PM. Right now, that's stated that we're gonna have it in the district office? Okay. We're gonna have that in the district office instead of in this room. Like I said, that's only a half an hour, and I don't believe I have anything on the agenda solid at this point, so I'm not exactly sure, we'll probably have some policies on there at least. And then, as I mentioned, we have a board retreat following that at 6:30 PM, and that will be a closed retreat for the board members. And then we have our next regular board meeting, one month from tonight, on March 26th at 6:00 PM in the media center. And then, of course, that was just added this evening, Lyndy is on it, March 27th at 6:00 PM will be the community engagement event discussing the strategic plan. So those are our upcoming meetings, and next, I am looking for a motion to adjourn, please.
Motion to adjourn.
All right, can I get a second?
Biermeyer seconds.
Any discussion? All right, all those in favor to adjourn, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. Motion passes unanimously to adjourn the meeting at 9:25 PM.